It's one minute past six, so it's time for our March meeting of the City of Beaver Creek Planning Commission. I'd like to welcome everybody here. Looks like we've got close to a standing room only crowd. Folks who are just checking in, don't be shy, there are plenty of seats up front. And we don't bite. We have six public hearings tonight, so it's a busy evening. So without further ado, roll call please ma'am.
Ms. Akers?
Here.
Mr. Height?
Here.
Mr. Loftus?
Here.
Mr. Schreider?
Here.
Mr. Self? Here. And in case you didn't see, the two of us have been reappointed for another three fun years on Planning Commission. So this is also the time of the year where we reorganize, but we'll do that after the agenda approval. Do I hear a motion? First of all, staff, any changes? Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as we have it?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agenda as written.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, second.
Thank you, and we'll do that by general consensus?
Yes.
Okay. Reorganization, it means we select a chair and a vice chair for the coming year. Nominations for chair?
I nominate Mr. Self.
Second the nomination.
I have a second. Further nominations?
Mr. Self?
No, seeing none. Seeing none. I'll close that, and that's by general consensus, thank you. And vice chair?
I nominate Mr. Loftus for vice chair.
I second that.
Nomination and a second, anyone else? Okay, I'll close the nominations and we'll do that by general consensus. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
There we go, we're back in the harness for another year. Approval of minutes from February. Any additions, corrections, changes, et cetera? Okay, I need a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the minutes from February 6th.
Thank you, and I need a second.
I'll second.
And we'll do that by general consensus?
Yes.
And I will abstain since I wasn't here. Okay, now, to the business at hand, our first public hearing tonight is 19-1. It's a conditional use for Zips Car Wash.
This is case number PC 19-1, conditional use. On an application filed by Zips Real Estate, the second LLC 127 West Berry Street, Suite 300, Fort Wayne, Indiana, 46802. The application requests conditional use to allow for a car wash on 1.3 acres of land. The property is located at 1243 North Fairfield Road. The property is further described as Book 5, Page 5, Parcel 99 on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. For those of you all who are attending maybe for the first time, our public hearings are conducted, first of all, we have a presentation by the applicant, then we have a presentation by our staff, then we will open the hearing to input from y'all, and we ask you to limit yourself to three minutes because after three minutes, I'm gonna whack the gavel so we can get through this. But please don't be shy if you've got some input, whether you have a question or are speaking in favor or against, just come on forward when I say so. Once everybody's had their chance to speak, we will close the public hearing and then we will discuss it and make a decision. So without further ado, anyone here, I'm sure there is someone here from Zips who's gonna make a presentation?
Good evening, my name is Jonathan Woker. I'm a planner with McBride-Dale Clarion representing Zips on this application. I also have Mark Batista here with Zips, and he may speak as well. Zips Car Wash has an option to purchase 1.3 acres at 1243 North Fairfield Road. The property is owned B2, Community Business District, and vehicle wash facilities are specified as conditional use in that district. There are currently two vacant structures on the property today, and our proposal is to remove those vacant structures and build a 3,874 square foot car wash facility. The proposed development meets or exceeds all setbacks, including a 50-foot rear setback and to the paved area where we will be installing substantial landscaping and fence in that area. This project involves a cross-access to the Frish's Restaurant and to the south, and that provides access to the traffic signal on North Fairfield. This project would also include an easement to the north for a future connection to the adjacent property. We have presented in the application a number of technical information about impervious surface and our landscaping requirements, our lighting plans and building plans as well. We did submit to the staff proposed color renderings of the application as well as our sign plans. Regarding the conditional use, we believe that we comply with the standards for conditional uses as outlined in Section 158.171. Specifically, vehicular washes are listed as conditional uses in the B2 district, and we believe that the impact on surrounding neighborhoods will be negligible. The site is on a five-lane road with commercial uses to the north, east, and west. We are proposing 31 trees to be planted to the west within a 50-foot setback and are proposing a six-foot vinyl fence to increase the buffer from the rear property line. The building will be more than 180 feet from the west property line. We have proposed hours of operation that will be consistent with the recommendations of the staff. This project will create another link that will allow Beaver Creek to have a parallel access road through the access easements that are, I referenced before. And the use will also have significantly less impact on traffic than other uses that could be permitted in the B2 district. We have presented information in the application about anticipated trip generation, and we think that our trip generation, again, is much less than could be developed by other uses such as a restaurant or financial institution, convenience store, or grocery. So we believe that the application meets the standards for the conditional use. We do not object to the conditions that staff has presented in the staff report, and we intend to continue to work with Frish's on the access issues that we have, and we're confident that we'll be able to work that out in a satisfactory condition. So I mention again, Mark Batista's here with Zips Car Wash, and we would like the opportunity to speak again if there are questions after staff report. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, Members of the Planning Commission. As was pointed out by the applicant, tonight we're here considering a conditional use approval for Zips Car Wash at 1243 North Fairfield Road. As you may be familiar with, as we had recent cases dealing with conditional uses and the procedural considerations for conditional use, some of the before-mentioned items about the color elevations and landscaping and the like do have a role, not so much on the building aesthetics, but what we're really focusing on is what's outlined in the zoning code when considering a conditional use approval. When we do that, the proof, it has to be shown that the use will not have a substantial material detrimental effect on surrounding properties and will not have substantially negative impact on or substantially conflict with surrounding properties. And furthermore, that's taking into account vehicular traffic volumes, traffic volumes that may, as may be expected to increase with increasing development of the community, and taking into account vehicular turning movements in relation to the routes of traffic flow, street intersections, site distances, and pedestrian traffic, that the vehicular traffic to and from the conditional use can be accommodated by the existing street network without significant adverse effect. As is the case with this conditional use process, it's the applicant's responsibility and burden to prove to the Planning Commission that these issues are not gonna be adversely impacted with the development of the site to the Planning Commission for your consideration. With that in mind, we've kind of broke down an analysis on the conditional use for the property. Again, this is a B2 zoning district. Car washes are a conditional use as opposed to a use at, by right. By right would be anybody who would come in as non-conditional use that would be appropriate in all B2 districts. When we look at B2 districts, we have their community business district, they tend to be along some of our local thoroughfares that do sometimes abut to residential properties, but not always. So on a conditional use, you can consider the impact it would have on an adverse property adjoining or nearby in terms of what is this surrounded by in terms of compatibility of the uses. This property does have a residential neighborhood just to the west of the property line that has to be taken into consideration as to the impact on the residential neighborhood for this use. Also, with the, with car washes, and it's nationwide on, what are the main concern of car washes in general, without considering specific traffic circulation, is noise generated by the vacuums and the dryers. So there were conditions put in place on the hours of operation, 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM daily. One thing we do want to point out here is if you see, there's some vegetation on the site currently that would provide a sound buffer, but that would all be cleared in order to prove, to develop the site and also to detain store water generated. So within that 50-foot buffer area, there still is a recession for a detention pond, so that vegetation will be gone backing up to those residential properties. As mentioned, they're working with the cross-access easement with Frish's. This, you can see this location here, that would come down to a stub, a 25-foot access easement was required to be granted on the subdivision plans from Frish's to the property to the north. As far as we know right now, that hasn't been absolutely solidified in terms of the agreement as to how that will work. There are, there is some significant grade changes as you come downhill on North Fairfield Road, so we'd have to look at the 25-foot, there's grading that have to occur outside of the 25-foot access easement. You can see there's a meter pit here where obviously the water connection would be below existing frost line, but if there were earthwork there, what impact would that have on the water? And Frish's give permission for the water to be relocated. Obviously, it's our goal for whatever development goes here that that ultimately be connected in order to access the light, but should they not come to an agreement with Frish's and given the intensity of the use, just to have to come back and get a significant major modification for the specific site plan and go through the process again because the access point would then only be on North Fairfield Road, and it would have a significantly different impact on how we, how this property would be developed in terms of traffic flow. The other concern when it comes to traffic circulation is, if I get this site plan, we'll use this one. The stacking, if you're coming in from this light on North Fairfield Road here from Beaver View Drive, you know from experience that the traffic light there does have significant backup. Obviously, the priority for traffic movements is on North Fairfield because vehicular volumes are a lot higher on North Fairfield Road, but it does stack up pretty far, so that light doesn't always allow everybody to clear that intersection coming through. When you have this connection, one thing we were worried about is the stacking area coming into the site again is pretty significant if you look at how far it comes around the perimeter of the property. But if you, if you, when you look at the exits with this light here and people waiting to go left by people going right, if they back up, if they pull through here and try to get into this light, oh, essentially, without the stop sign, because if it stacks and it moves slowly, people tend to encroach into that. If they're in a stacking situation, they won't stop and yield, but we would obviously require a stop sign there. But this could potentially stack back up into this area where, because it's dependent on the light, the signal here, and if we're worried about this stacking back and people coming through and somebody coming left in to get to Frish's, and this is really, the two entrances to Frish's could be impacted, which would back traffic up into North Fairfield Road. When you're looking at the conditional use, when we're looking at the traffic standpoint and the impact on the neighbors, that's really the two major concerns, or three major concerns is the unknown with the access point to Frish's, the potential for stacking, coming in and out, they're blocking access, backing traffic North Fairfield Road, and the impact that may have on the residential properties from the noise standpoint. But with that, the, we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have following the public hearing. Thank you.
Before you sit down, would you explain, this is a little bit different from what we, how we normally hear a presentation or a development like this, in that this is a conditional use. And can you give us just a little, before we ask for public input, I want you all to understand what we are looking at here. This is not a rezoning, and this is not a specific site plan. This is for a conditional use, and the conditional use is one of those administrative decisions that the Planning Commission makes. I'm getting a smile from our legal representative over here. Jeff, do you want to do this, or you want to turn it over to our legal eagle?
I'd be happy to. I mean, when the zoning code was amended, the conditional uses were given administrative decisions by Planning Commission. They're no longer a recommendation body to Planning Commission in these instances. They decide a conditional use as opposed to a site plan or rezoning where a recommendation would be made to City Council as to your recommendation, what City Council's action should be. In this, in this case, conditional use, the action is final upon a decision by Planning Commission, and a conditional use is different in the fact that this, the array of things to consider are very pointed as opposed to expansive in landscaping, lighting, architectural elevations, detention, it's a pretty focused conversation on adverse effect on adjoining properties and adverse effect on traffic vehicle circulation. It's pretty, it's a very narrow scope as to what can be considered, but again, it's, those two things are why we address the issues that we address now and not some of the other issues we're typically addressed with lighting and signage and landscaping and all that.
And the medical marijuana site was a conditional use?
It was.
Hearing, so if you followed that, it's, it was, what we're doing tonight is similar to that?
Exactly.
In terms of our decision-making process. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just want to make sure everybody was clear on that. So since we've heard the presentation, I will open this up to public input. If you would, please identify yourself and your address when you come up to the podium, and if you would also keep in mind what you just heard, that we're looking at adverse impact on adjacent property and adverse impact on the traffic in the area. Not that, there are already plenty of car washes in Beaver Creek, that is not something that we look at at Planning Commission, regardless of whether it's a car wash or a pizza place or whatever. So if you would like to come forward, and folks in the back, we've got seats up front, I hate to see you stand. If you would like to make a presentation here, if you would, limit it to three minutes?
How's everybody doing tonight? I'm Joe Sayadine, address is 281 Yorkshire Lane. Me and my wife and family, we own Beaver Creek Auto Bath down the street at 1465 North Fairfield Road. I'm coming in because I'm concerned about the effect that it's gonna have, and I know you just said that's not what we're here for, but I'm gonna say it. It will affect our family in a negative way, and I want everybody to know, we're not just some giant corporation, we're real people, real family, that that will affect in a negative way. There's only so many car washes that can be built along a certain area of road. That being said, let me read my notes down here. As far as the easement, or the, not the easement, but the, what this, what the Zips is, what they're asking for here, I do believe it will affect the traffic negatively in that area. I drive that twice a day, three times a day, we all do. It stacks up pretty badly in there, and, you know, just think about it, if an ambulance with a loved one in it was going through there, how long is an acceptable time to be stuck behind traffic that was turned into a car wash? You know, we have to ask ourselves that. The other point I would like to make, because I do have the background in it, is how will it affect the water pressure and the water volume for neighboring businesses such as Frish's? We all know that car washes use a lot of water, and that could drop the pressures right next door, and in a restaurant, you have to have water to operate. So that's something I wanted to point out. As far as driving through Frish's to get to the car wash and driving out to get out of the car wash, that's gonna create a blockage for Frish's. Now, I know they're not, I don't think they're here tonight, but that's gonna, that's a long shot. That's gonna create a lot of blockage there, especially on days when some tunnels can run up to 200 cars an hour. That's a lot of cars an hour. Zips calls themselves a three-minute car wash. That's busting it out quick. And then those cars have to get dumped on a Fairfield Road quickly because they can't, you know, first is parking lot. So that's, I think that's a very negative detrimental effect to the surrounding businesses. Not only Frish's, but Tim Horton's, right across the street, there's a bad egress from that. That's tough to get out of. I go to Tim Horton's all the time, I get coffee there. That's tough to get out of, and I think adding this much more traffic in there, just trying to get through that intersection, is too much. It's a bridge too far. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, Tom Nickerbacher, Nickerbacher Pools, live at 1676 Traybine Road. I grew up, I was born and raised in Beaver Creek, have been doing business in Beaver Creek for many decades, have a pretty good feel for the area. We run a business in Beaver Creek. Very pro-business, so not, and I go to a lot of zoning meetings where people complain about what people want to do, and I don't want to, I don't like to think that I'm one of those people. I understand that you can't say there's, I know you can't say that there are too many car washes, or there could be too many gas stations, or too many burger places, or whatever. So it's not so much that, I mean, there, it does seem like a lot of car washes when you have mics and then deans and then another one, and then the new one right by Burger King. It seems like a lot of car washes in one area, but, you know, that's the American business. My thought is more about the future vision of Beaver Creek, and as I've been in, looking at the zoning maps and things, I know there's, there's kind of a plan for every space. We don't have all that much space. That's one of the problems in Beaver Creek is we're just very limited on the area. So some thought might be put into how to use the limited area that we have to the betterment of the community. If we have 100 car washes and we have no places to eat, then that doesn't serve the community very well. Seems like we have a lot of car washes, and if there were some other business that could go in there, that would be more diverse. You know, if they want to line up and have 100 car washes and all compete for the same car that needs washed, I don't know why so many cars need washed, but it just seems like with limited space, we could use that maybe more appropriately for some other type of activity. So that's all I have.
Thank you.
I'm Jim Ashbrook, 127 Enoch's. My property actually backs up to the proposed site. I'm obviously gonna get directly impacted, and to go to what you really want to hear about is from that drawing, let's just start with the cars lining up there in the back, 50-foot buffer, guys sitting there listening to radio all day long, not counting the machines running all day long. So I think the noise alone in that area compared to where the houses are is gonna be a huge impact. I appreciate the time barrier that we're trying to put on them. I don't know if anybody mentioned anything about the outside vacuums, do they get shut off at 7:00, things like that. Obviously, I can agree with everybody else, you know, having three car washes within one mile of North Fairfield Road is pretty excessive. You guys just allowed a new one to get built? They're almost ready to open up in a few months, are we already looking to cut that guy's throat and start taking some of his money? Off track, I know, but... Second of all, screening, screening something like that within 50 feet is gonna be very, very difficult. If you notice the screening that was proposed for Frish's to screen for us by your staff, they put in all these five-foot blue spruce trees, said, "Here you go, Jim, we got natural screening in there for you." Well, not sure how old Frish's is, well, now we got six-foot blue spruce trees, so anybody want to drive through Frish's and look up in my, back in my house, you guys are more than welcome to this time of year. It's like there's nothing there at all. So I think the two big things that I have obviously are noise and screening, just for the visual effect, the lights. I don't think that site, the way they have it sitting there, is ever gonna really work for us. I've seen some of their buildings turned and running along the road front with all their vacuums and everything on the front of their building. It might have worked, because then we'd add probably 200 feet or 150 feet from the back of their building and to residential properties. I ask you guys really to think about the residential properties anymore. I agree with the last gentleman, property, commercial property is getting thin, but everything we're putting on these commercial properties now and getting closer to closer residential properties is just causing guys like me just to want to pack up and move. I'm born and raised in Beaver Creek, you know, I've been here pretty much all my life, I'm a small business owner, so I, normally not the guy to stop anybody from doing what they want to do with their own property, but when it starts affecting me and my family and my neighbors. The other gentleman up there is Eddie Kirk, and I don't think anybody from the Kirks are here today. Unfortunately, he's a snowbird, he's in Florida right now, so I don't even know if he got the message. So I tried to reach out to him, was not successful. So hopefully, this is just the beginning, where you guys are starting to think about it. There's nothing gonna be hammered on tonight, I hope. Hopefully, you guys can drive out there and look at the site and just kind of really consider what the, what kind of noise a car wash really puts out and how long. And like I said, you know, a guy can roll in there at midnight, decide he wants to vacuum his car out, open his doors, have his radio on, I don't think there's a whole lot wrong with that, except for when it's, you know, a couple hundred feet from my bedroom window, so. So basically, obviously, I oppose it, so that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Excellent timing, he had seven seconds left.
I'll give that to the next guy.
Others?
How are you all this evening? My name is Joel Price, I own Joel's Pro Tree Service here in Beaver Creek, and I live at 4220 Pennywood Drive, here in Beaver Creek. I think the question we have to ask ourselves is what do we want to see this city turning into? Because when you allow outside business to come in and undercut the local business, you didn't, you didn't increase the amount of revenue into the economy because the money was already there. You just transferred where it's going to, and it's leaving our community, it's not staying here. So despite, you know, what everybody's saying about how we don't need another car wash, even more than that, it's, do we want Beaver Creek to be owned by the citizens of Beaver Creek, or do we want it to be owned by some outside corporation that has no interest in our community? And then on top of that, I'm in the tree removal business, so I make a living off of removing trees. I plant very few. That's a problem. We're removing a significant amount of trees here, right in the middle of town, that nobody's going to replant. And the number that they, when they do replant them, they replant like these small little trees that don't produce nearly enough air back into the atmosphere that the larger trees that have been there a while have. And then there's obviously animals and other things that are living in that area that are now without a home. And so I think in the interest of what we want to see our community become, and the interest of small business, and the interest of keeping our town the way that it is, because we've seen a lot of cities just get bigger and bigger and bigger, bringing in corporations, and then what happens? It's not the nice town that everybody's grown to love. I'm done.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone, I'm Brian Lucas. I live at 3636 Meadow Court Drive in Beaver Creek. Mine is gonna be very, very brief, because I know you don't want to hear it because you've heard it already. But I came here for one reason, is because I live in Beaver Creek. I own this old couch with my wife, it's on Dayton-Zeonia Road, and we were here three years ago and were able to get what we wanted, and now I come here to say I don't want the person to get what they want. And I hate to do that, but I do it for one reason and one reason only, is because a Beaver Creek resident and a Beaver Creek business is going to be affected, and I don't want that to happen to them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Bruce Hall, and I am the owner of Bruce Hall Insurance Agency, and I'm just two doors down from the property. I'm at 1209 North Fairfield Road. I'm at 1209 North Fairfield Road. I came here tonight to the hearing invited by you because I got a letter in the mail. And of course, I was two doors down.
Because you're close by.
That's right, very close by. My business is located right in the middle of all the changes in this area over the last eleven years. It started with Frish's going in and the old house is torn down and developing that lot. Then my friends Keith and Lisa Maxwell sold their property to Grismer Tire. And Grismer, which was located on one side of my building, relocated down there. The landlord then sold that building to Advance Auto Parts. One of my points is that there are four car washes presently in Beaver Creek and a fifth one being built down the street, and the city is considering allowing a sixth car wash on the property in question. My take is there are only so many cars in Beaver Creek that use a car wash facility, and eventually, one to two of these car washes are not going to make it. Now, can you convert a car wash facility? No, you can't. It's going to have to be torn down, which adds the cost of another business redoing the lot, makes the location less attractive and developing. This is the nature of business. Business owners take this risk. Do we need a sixth car wash? I doubt it. My main two objectives in issuance of the zoning variance is twofold, speaking as a business owner in the neighborhood. The proposed car wash would not be a good fit with the business neighbors. I'm one of them. I don't think it's a good fit. I do feel another usage of the lot and a different type of business would be a better fit for the business neighborhood that I belong to. My number one concern is safety. And if this car wash is built in this particular lot, this area to me, as I drive it multiple times a day, is the most dangerous section of North Fairfield Road on the entire Fairfield Road. It is a heavy traffic road and the cars are going through the light at Fairfield and Dayton's Zine are flying down that hill where this property is located. Everybody that drives that knows that. I think the city knows it, too. How I get down the hill, and I do it multiple times a day, is I turn my turn signal right on in front of this property to go through the traffic light. And I got a hard right, so I'm in, my eyes are on the rearview mirror because I want to make sure I don't get rear-ended because those cars are flying down the road. Sometimes it's difficult for me to get out of my office, turning left, so I go down to U-Haul, go down there and turn that left and do a roundabout and go back up North Fairfield Road. This is a routine I've done for 11 years, and the light at Frish's did help slow the traffic, and I can get out easier. I also advise some of my customers to do the same thing. Okay. Closing remarks. I'm a business owner the last seven years. The issue to me and the main issue I'm here to, and it's what the city brought up, safety. It doesn't fit in the neighborhood. Safety is my concern, and I don't think it's a good fit for my business neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. I knew you'd come up here eventually. You kept looking to make sure nobody...
Gentlemen, John Roush with Flying Ace Express Car Wash. First, thank you for working with us and our project. We really are happy to be in the community. It's our second location in the community. We've donated thousands of car washes, done a lot for local people here, and we're really proud to be here in this community. Quick background, we've been looking for our second location in Beaver Creek for three years now. We started out in the old ice cream shop up on the corner and worked our way down to this exact site. Working with staff, we did some studies. We've spent $25,000, $30,000 looking at these two sites, site planning them. In fact, that site plan looks very familiar. And we've determined, and we backed off of this site intentionally because exactly everything this gentleman said. We knew we'd be a nuisance. We know what we create sound-wise, smell-wise, music-wise, cars idling-wise. We know the detention on the back of this site is going to be lower than actual pavement. That means no matter what screening you put in there, it's got to grow extra tall. So your five footers need to be 25 footers before they're actually going to do any screening. And we just felt, being good community members, that we need to do the right thing. And we decided to take a risk and move to our really, which was a third or fourth site on the other side of 35, take that eyesore off of the city's hands and put a really great business in over there. So obviously, we think this is not a great site, and we hope you take that into consideration. Thank you again for everything in the past.
Thank you.
Evening, everybody. Dave Barney with Barney's True Value down the street. I live at 2912 Stauffer, also Barney's Hardware, obviously. From a traffic standpoint, this makes no sense whatsoever. I mean, it's hard to get out of my business onto Dayton's Zine because of what has been done there with the road and everything else. And I've asked for a light to be put there so we could get out. You can't hardly turn left out of my road. Dayton's Zine is not near as busy as North Fairfield. You've got Krogers dumping in on one side that you have to sit through three and four lights to get out from Krogers, which I do plenty of times. You can't get in and out of Frish's. And if you've got cars trying to get into the car wash and the amount of cars that they want to run through there trying to get out, you're going to have cars sitting in that intersection. It's only going to make things worse. There's no logical reason. I agree with the Flying Aces gentleman. I understand why he backed out of that because it doesn't make sense, and it doesn't make sense for the city. I understand you guys are trying to fill some old houses and get rid of some things that are eyesores, but you know, Beaver Creek was founded on family-owned businesses and locally-owned businesses. Adding one that isn't a good fit, period, because of traffic flow and everything else doesn't make sense. I totally am opposed, and I think it's a, I think it's a terrible idea personally.
Thank you. See, if you're quiet and don't say anything, somebody will come up.
Hello. I am Jessica Dean. I live at 281 New Yorkshire Lane. I am Josiah Dean's wife, and we own the Beaver Creek Auto Bath. I have a couple more letters from a couple other people within the community that are opposed to this that I can give you guys. I know I've given you guys two ugly ones. I'll just read the one from another person within the community that also has a business here, says, "Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to raise opposition to the current matter before you today. I've learned of the current zoning requests for conditional use for the property located at 1243 North Fairfield Road. I kindly ask you to consider my position as well as others in the community and deny the zoning requests. I'm a member of the Beaver Creek Chamber of Commerce and currently operate a dental practice at the location 3223 Beaver View Drive. I'm in the process of expanding my business at the location, and I'm also a resident of 16-plus years of Beaver Creek Township. Under the zoning code, to approve conditional use, you must make three certain findings. If this use can be conditional permitted, the second and third finding cannot be in favor of the request before you. First, this use will have a substantial or material detrimental effect on surrounding properties or a conflict with those properties. I urge you to find that this request for conditional use by Zip's will have a substantial and material detrimental effect on surrounding properties. The location request is fundamentally detrimental to similar businesses as their four other current, one in the process of being built, operational car washes located on the same street, North Fairfield Road. I have taken the opportunity to drive between the two furthest away, BP Gas Station and the new Flying Ace. The drive between these two is seven minutes with stoplights, the traffic at this posted speed limit. Moreover, if this were granted, you would have three in the proximity of Dayton's Zine Road to 35. It is incredible that we would think that another car wash would be needed. If this is even more incredible that we would believe that the allowance of yet another car wash would not have a detrimental effect on the four other current car washes on the same street in the same town. I do not have to give you a detailed business statistics and research to convince you that allowance of yet another unneeded car wash will have a grave effect on the current ones, especially the ones who are owned by current local community citizens. These people cannot bear the burden and carry the debt of these large corporate structures, can we as citizens of Beaver Creek?
You're bad out of time.
Okay.
I think we have the gist, and we also have the written input here.
Right. And there's more about traffic, and you guys can read that. It is signed by a local resident, and so again, I also oppose it, obviously. The traffic would be crazy there. It is a dangerous section of the road. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there others? Don't be shy. Anybody else? Anybody else? Going, going.
I don't get to speak again?
Well, if we have questions, if we have questions for you, we'll, we'll, we'll ask them.
Okay.
If you would.
All right.
Because I think what, we've heard what you said, and we have a lot of input from staff.
Okay. Well, I hope if you have questions about what you've heard, that you'll give us an opportunity to speak about that.
Correct. Oh, yeah. We're going to discuss it. Don't you worry. Other citizen input. Going, going, gone. Okay, I'll close the public hearing. And I think I'll start on my far right this time.
Mr. Self.
Yes.
I want to go ahead and put in written input.
Oh, I'm sorry. We had written input.
Yes. The commissioners have received copies of every one of the letters. We received one from John Roush with Express Wash Concepts opposing the request. Another one was from Josiah and Jessica Dean with Beaver Creek Auto Bath requesting denial. Another was from Bill Keller with Central Carpet and Interiors opposing the request. And then the two that you just received tonight, one was from Cherry House Cafe opposing, and the other was from Steve Shufflebarger of 3223 Beaver View Drive, also objecting the case.
Okay. I apologize. It slid right by me there. Okay. Input from my fellow commissioners. You're up. Turn your mic on.
Sorry, just a second. If you don't mind, I wasn't quite ready. I've got it.
All right. I have quite a few questions for the applicant. If you could please step up here.
I'm going to bring Mark up as well because he may be able to answer.
Sure, absolutely. I want to specifically ask questions in regards to the traffic and the noise, which I think are the two largest concerns in this, this particular action. So I see in the packet that we're working on an easement. Where are you at right now with an easement with Frish's? This packet shows everything to be an easement, but we, I know as of today, we don't have an easement in place, and the specific site plan is very specific to an easement. But the other option is then to dump onto Fairfield Road, which further exacerbates my problems with the increased traffic flow over there. So where are you at in the easement process today?
I've had conference calls with the CFO of Frish's, and he's in favor of, of working with us on the easement and also, because Frish's leases that property from a group out of Florida. So I've had conversations with them. We're in the process of back and forth going with the attorneys to just get the language right. But they're all, they're all fine with granting the easement and working the shut-off with Frish's, obviously after hours.
Okay. Okay. What about the sound side of things? So I see you have some generic, it looks like white paper numbers from Decibel. Have there been any sound studies performed on the site? Or are we just using boilerplate numbers that are provided by a manufacturer?
Well, yeah, there's not been a sound study done on that site. The first producer would be 145 feet, which is the vacuum producer, 145 feet from the rear property line.
Okay.
And those, I think, go to, I think I've got them with me, but you know, and then if, if sound's an issue, we've enclosed them in the past, put a wall around part of it to, to muffle some of the sound if it becomes an issue.
Okay. What about the vacuum? Somebody brought up the vacuum issue. Are those going to be shut off as well at 7:00 PM?
Oh, yeah. Yes, yeah.
So it'll be a system in place to knock those blowers?
Well, when, when it closes at night, we shut off the vacuum and everything down.
Okay. And then is it, I guess we'll come back to traffic again. Would you be opposed to, I just don't see how the stacking's going to work on the easement to be able to provide. I, again, go up and down that road many, many times a day, and I'm very familiar with the backup of traffic in that area. Are you opposed to redesigning that, that site layout to accommodate not only the light issues in the back corner, the western, northwestern edge, but, but actually moving the flow of traffic to accommodate the sound issues and to accommodate the flow of traffic? I'm very involved in road building and other areas, and I don't see any way in which that small stub is going to provide any sort of relief to allow those cars to stack. I don't have a ruler out, but I can see there's maybe eight cars fit before you're encroaching on the incoming traffic.
Yeah, but 60, 70% or 60 to 70% of the people actually vacuum after they get their car wash. So they don't, they don't come out of the tunnel and go straight out. So there, there's definitely a, a flow there. And if it becomes an issue, you just stop the conveyor until it clears, and then you can start it up. We can control what comes out of the end of that tunnel. But I mean, to have a, that is actually a better scenario than, than putting it out onto North Fairfield because that light would back up traffic all the way back and nobody could get out. This allows cars to get into the, into that easement area to make that left or straight or go right. So there's, there's, you know, and I don't know what the cycle time is on that light if it's two minutes. You know, if you're doing 60 cars an hour, that's a car a minute. And you know, if that cycle time is, I think it's been timed, I timed it, it's been two minutes. I mean, you can get a lot of cars out of there in that timeframe.
Well, yes and no. That's assuming that those left cars don't stack and because you have too much straight going and right-going traffic there, so that would, left lane would stack and stack and stack and stack. Because I can tell you residential is all to the north and every other business is to the south there. I'm sorry, the other way around. I'm sorry, to the south and to the north. Got my directions mixed up here a little bit. I... I don't have any further questions at this point. I'll go ahead and just take it over to your chair. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
I have a list of questions. And I guess we'll start with the noise issue and then move down to access and traffic. So I know that you said that these blowers are going to be located 145 feet away. Is that correct?
The vacuum producers, yes.
The vacuum producers. Is that?
No, that's not on there.
That's not on there.
But I mean, I, I brought a set of drawings that showed where those vacuum producers would be to measure that distance.
Okay.
If you know, if you want a copy of them, I can. Basically, they're in, they're in the islands on the, the escape lane before the entrance of the tunnel. There's two islands right there where on the sides, that's where they would be. Yes.
What about the noise generated from the vacuums? The actual vacuum cleaners?
Well, they go into a handle that, that shuts off, not that, that basically stops the vacuum when they're not in use. The only, the only noise you would hear is, is when someone's using them in a normal vacuum. So when they're not in use, they get put into a holder, which shuts off the air.
Right, 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 right.
Yes.
Okay. But we don't know what sound is produced or what the decibel level is produced whenever we'll say five of those are in use at the same time.
No.
What about sound of traffic? So understand that the blowers are up there, the vacuums maybe not be as loud, but what about the, do we have a sound measurement or a potential measurement of what impact just the sound of the running cars is going to have or how far that's going to reach back to that residential area?
No, I do not.
Okay.
We do meet the buffer requirements that the city established for...
We do meet the buffer requirements that the city established for that and have planted accordingly.
Absolutely, and I understand that. But just meeting those buffers doesn't mean it's not going to have a substantial detrimental impact on the properties behind it, is my concern. With the relocation, and I'm not sure if you know this, I know it was something that was mentioned by staff. Would the relocation of the utilities impact the restaurant?
Well, until we do the tap, would be like overnight, would be, they'd have to, we'd have to shut their water off one night to do the tap.
And is Frish's aware of that?
Yes, I've talked to the...
And then, I guess kind of back to, and then maybe you've answered this, back to the traffic and the stacking of the vehicles that are coming out. Do you plan on putting a stop sign or any type of traffic motion detector? I don't, not a motion detector, but anything to impede the cars coming out from blocking that access when people are trying to pull in?
Well, if there's a car in front of it, there's, there's a magnetic pad that's in front of it. So if a car is on that pad, it automatically stops the conveyor.
Not necessarily the conveyor, I mean down at the, where the easement is going to be located.
No, just a stop sign.
And then, I guess kind of, is there any way to, I know that that's where the stub is located and that's where it was originally intended. Is there any way to move that easement? Or to negotiate movement of that easement further away from the intersection?
I wouldn't know.
Okay. What is the number of cars on average that you have going through?
Oh, it varies time of day and the, the day and the type of, but I think if you look at sixty to seventy car hours, one a minute.
That'd be maximum during your peak time?
Yeah, that's a peak.
Okay. And then you've already answered that. And then, to address Mr. Dean's concern with water pressure, is there, could that be an impact? Could the surrounding neighborhood or the surrounding areas be impacted? And that may not be a question that you can answer, we may have to defer to our staff.
Well, no, there's, in, in the equipment room, we have tanks that fill up, so we're not taking directly from the main water line. So we fill up tanks and then pump out of those tanks to eliminate any pressure with, with the city.
Okay. And then I know that there hasn't been a noise study conducted. But has any, I guess, without a noise study, you probably don't know the answer to this question. But with the fencing and the trees, I mean, what type of buffering or what type of, I mean, right now, we're looking, if I'm looking at some of these, a hundred feet out, I think, is a hundred and, I don't know, I can't find that sheet. Okay, a hundred feet out is 75 decibels. What type of, how does the fencing or the trees lower that decibel level?
How does it? It absorbs the decibel level. Now, how much, I don't know. I can't, I'm not a, I don't have the science behind that.
Okay.
But we've, we've put, there's washes that we have put in that are less of a buffer and it's not been an issue in residential area. Fifty foot is a large buffer, you know, we've put in much less than that.
Okay. I think that's all the questions I have for now. Staff, I do have two questions for you. Maybe three questions. This may be a question actually for Melissa. How many, do we have the number of residents that are within the notice range?
Oh, boy.
That's fine, I'll ask another question while you look that up. Where did that 50 decibel standard derive from that's in the conditional use packet?
We looked at, since it's going to be running at seven o'clock, we, I mean, we looked at some of the, history on some of the case law in Illinois and some of these things were conditional uses that have been considered. And 70 decibels came up quite frequently, 70 dBAs within the medium range, but it's still the noise of a vacuum. So if they're saying these things will mitigate the, if the trees and the fences would mitigate any of that noise levels, it should get it down to 50 and that's why we require the study to say that it would be no more than 50 at the property line.
Okay.
Because it's open at seven, you know, in the summer, without the vegetation there, the, you know, you still would have the constant buzz for at least two hours where you're at home hooking out or whatever.
Understood.
There were 26 letters mailed out.
Okay. And then, my last question, I believe, will probably be for Mr. Mormon. I apologize, fellow commissioners. Have you done any type of engineering assessment on the traffic in that area?
As far as with this particular development or just in, in general?
I guess both, in general and as far as that particular development. And I guess my concern comes from the fact that we have that traffic light there, which is fine. But I also know that there are traffic concerns in that northern retail plaza there. People trying to turn in and out, especially those trying to turn left. And then the other adjustment that comes out from Kroger that does not touch that light. And so with all of those things coming into play, maybe not even taking into consideration the car wash, what type of, could this create more of an issue?
Well, I would say that the current use of that property, I think, is, is, I think, of vacant, single-family residence. So, you know, the obvious answer is if you tear down a single-family residence and you build this car wash facility, the answer is yes, you're going to get an increase in traffic. I haven't seen any other proposed traffic generation numbers for this site, but undoubtedly, there will be more traffic. This will generate more traffic than the current use out there. As far as studies along the corridor, I guess, just real briefly, we have done a couple of safety studies through there and we've made some changes over the past couple of years through there, which I think have helped reduce our crash numbers through there. Well, we continue to look at crash reports when they come in and we evaluate what we can to improve safety always.
Is there any way, I know there's a way to do this. Would we consider if the traffic flow became excessive, adjusting that light? The timing of the light?
Sure, and you know, the issue with that is we have a very large number of vehicles on North Fairfield Road. So you could see we're just a little bit of less green time on North Fairfield Road could cause some pretty major issues as far as traffic backups. So, you know, we could look at it, but it would be difficult to, or I would be hesitant to stop more cars on North Fairfield Road unless I absolutely had to.
Had to, okay. That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
So my, my biggest struggle here is literally logistics of the, of the traffic. So you control the chute, right? I'm sorry, yes, it's for you.
Yes.
You control the chute and seventy, seventy percent of people roughly go in vacuum. You still have the same number of people trying to get out at the same time. So if you stop the chute and yet you have people coming in, and then you're backing up, and you're backing out, you're backing up on both sides. You're backing up getting out of Frish's parking lot and you're backing up from Frish's parking lot. You know, Mike's Car Wash has three, three lanes going into their one chute. And on a night, you said, you know, it depends on the time of the day, it depends on the weather, it depends on what it was like yesterday. That's, you're going to have the same, you know, early in the morning, lunchtime, after work. You're going to be piling people into the same, at the same time that these other businesses are letting folks out. I, I just don't know how you're going to get the throughput that, that, through that easement. And, and if I was Frish's, I'd be hesitant because you're blocking their exit. If you did have backups, I'm, I'm no professional by any means, but you'd be backing their exit for their customers to, to get out. So my biggest, my big concern is getting out is one, but even getting in, it could be, it could be an issue. And if we, if we will not likely change that light, that area backs up significantly, right?
Mike's, Mike's have, have greeters, we, we, these are more, this is with a gate. So the time at the pay station is less than using a greeter. And the, the, there's over 25 cars of stacking on the entrance of the tunnel. And, I mean, yeah, that's, that's a lot. That's a lot.
I apologize, that wasn't a question at all. So here's my, here's my question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, I didn't frame it as a question, my apologies. So the other thing, Mr. Ashbrook is, you know, as staff said, Mr. Ashbrook has got at least two hours a night where he has, you know, all that noise coming up during the week. What about on Saturdays? I mean, you're obviously not going to change any, any part of your business from weekday to Saturday. So he's going to go 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM on the weekends as well?
Yes.
Yeah, neither of those are really questions. No, I appreciate it, thank you. That's enough.
You know, I think, one thing to consider, since this is a conditional use, is to look at whether this use is generating more traffic than a B2 use. What would a, an alternate use and how would that layout work, right? So the city's plan is for this property to be accessed from the easement and to close the two existing driveways on North Fairfield, which is what we're going to accomplish. And that, there's really no alternative to this property developing except through this easement and, and using the existing traffic signal. And, and I would suggest to the commission that this is a relatively low traffic generator compared to other trip generations that you could get in a B2 district. And that we have controlled the on circulation very well. We have very adequate stacking, you know, coming in and controlling that. And that with stop bars and, and stop signs and, and the pace of the tunnel, that we'll be able to control that to some extent as well. And that the peak hour of our business, which would be Saturday, is fortunately not the same peak hour as North Fairfield, which would be, you know, during the four to six in the, in the evening. So our peak hours are a little bit off from what the traffic on North Fairfield would be.
Alright, we're back to Mr. Heintz.
Everybody's asked your questions now.
Alright, so just to follow up for the applicant real quick with the statement that you just said. So you say you're significantly less than a lot of the other types of uses that could go on this property. Can you tell me where you derive, if you're, let's say, worst case, worst case scenario at capacity at 60 cars an hour, where have you derived that information to show that those other businesses would produce more traffic flow than that? Than 60 cars an hour?
Well, I think you would look at the peak hour of other businesses like financial institution, a convenience store, a grocery store that do generate higher trip rates. We've not done a, a traffic impact study for this, but the empirical information is that a, a car wash does not generate the same volumes as a restaurant, for example, as a Frish's would.
Right, I guess I'm asking where that, like, where you're getting that information from? What source? Just for clarification purposes for myself.
Yeah, well, I would say that that's empirical, professional knowledge from our experience in dealing with other B2 and business uses.
Okay, thank you. I have one for the staff. Hopefully for you.
Yes, sir.
So following up on what Tiffany said, I know we're not going to, we're not talking about changing the timing of the lights and things of that sort, but the light currently is set. Do we know how long the green?
No, I can add, I can defer that to Jeff, but you know, as right now, as we see, there's very few cars coming out of Frish's, if anybody who knows, this is a pretty heavily utilized access drive from everybody, especially that's south of Beaver Creek, to go left on a Beaver View, or North Fairfield Drive, from Beaver Valley Drive, Beaver View Drive. And when you do experience one car coming out of here and they are going right, if you had, if you increase the consistency of that flow, these cars don't turn left and right simultaneously. So when you have these cars coming out of this stacking and going right on red or going right through there consistently on green, the left-hand traffic lane over here, which backs up past Kroger's entrances, all of a sudden even gets more impacted depending on the consistency and the concentration of the traffic, even at peak hours. You know, I understand what they're saying about the bank. Just the, the methodical nature of how these cars get pumped out, I mean, we've seen it. I mean, you go to any of the car washes, you see the stacking and the consistency of popping these cars out if it's every three minutes. You know, if they can run through every three minutes, it's pretty consistent on the outside. I don't know of a bank that's had that situation. And I don't, I'm not basing that on anything either, other than what we've seen at some of the other locations in, in town. But in terms of the timing of the light, like Mr. Mormon said, it's, it's, it's obviously quicker when it turns from green to red on Beaver View than it is from when it turns to green to red on North Fairfield Road, just given the volume of the traffic. I don't know the exact time, if you, I mean, if you want, and further clarify.
Yeah, that's fine, thank you.
Yeah, I would just mention that there's a actual system along the whole corridor right there where all the signals are all coordinated. There's a fiber optic cable that connects them all together where they can all talk to each other. We have different, because traffic patterns change over the course of the day. So we have different timing patterns to mimic what the traffic's actually doing based on studies that we've done to set these, these thresholds. So during peak times, the max cycle length is 120 seconds. And in the middle of the night, obviously, it runs free, which is a much shorter cycle length, which I think is like on the order of like 60, 70 seconds. So it depends on, on the time of day when you hit the signal as to how long you're going to wait based on that cycle length.
So the, the fiber optics and that, right now, it's ran on the public roads. So if this was, if this easement was granted and, and built, would it account for that traffic that was sitting, you know, north or south of that, or I'm sorry, north of that stop sign if they put a stop sign right there? Meaning it's collecting all this information from all of the other three areas to adjust the light accordingly. It might only think one car's sitting there all the time. I'm just curious if that would be a possibility based on the way the system's set up.
No, and the way that the timings are set, we do, when we go to design the system, we do actual traffic counts and see what the volumes are and how they vary over the course of the day. So those are pre-programmed into the, the system where at certain times of day, it'll, it'll know to change to a different timing plan. Where it's not really a dynamic thing based upon cars waiting or anything, it's pre-programmed.
Okay. I understand, thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
I will commend my fellow commissioners on asking all the questions I had written out here. So, I do have a couple of, a couple of comments. I don't think I'll have any questions for you, but I'll yell if I need you. Just a couple of thoughts, as I've been listening to this. This is the only one of the car washes in the area that abuts residential. All the others are surrounded by some kind of commercial setup. Or, or commercial zoning. The thing that concerns me about the traffic is the throughput. When you have, it's a, it's a fairly constant throughput. Whereas a restaurant or almost any other kind of business, other than like a drive-through bank, you're not going to have a steady stream of vehicles leaving. And I think that's what could, could really mess up the timing there of the light. Those are, those are my two concerns on this. So, but no questions. Second helpings, anybody generate another question?
I do have one further question for, for Mr. McGrath. I'm looking at what appears to be, it says grading plan, but it appears to be the photometric plan.
Yes?
So the one I'm looking at right here, and it's, it's hard to tell because it's, it's, looks like a copy of a copy of a copy. I'm noticing that the foot candles, hey, first of all, they didn't include anything beyond the actual, the footprint of the, the surface in the building. What's the expected photometric output at the edge of this? Because I'm noticing that, that it's 9.3 foot candles.
Legally, it has to be zero.
Okay.
We, we, we would require that.
Any concern with how this is already laid out? Because I mean, they're pretty high foot candles.
We would, you know, if it ever got to that point, it would, we would never approve the plans of a, a photometric plan before we issue a zoning permit without showing zero foot candles at the property lines. So that's a, that's a legal requirement.
Okay, alright, perfect, that's all I had. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Wait, wait, wait.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Wait, wait, wait. Oh, oh, oh. Sorry, maybe I have another question. Mr. Roush brought up the concern about the retention pond, that's going to be on that backside of the property. Is it true or accurate that, on the backside of that property, where that retention pond is going to be, that it's going to be set down a little bit lower, or graded at a lower grade, than the rest of where the car wash is going to be, essentially?
Oh, yeah, sure. I mean, this is a ravine. You know, this is what it's designed for, is to hold the capacity of water, so it's got to be below the adjacent grades.
Thank you.
Well, that generates a question of mine. I knew I'd have one. So, the, the upper edge of the retention pond, how does that relate to the adjacent property to the west? Is it at grade, above grade, or below grade?
It's got, it's got to be below. It's all downhill, you know, coming down that way. And that's why you see the ponds all along North Fairfield are substantially large in these locations, because that's where the majority of the water runs downhill, right?
And that drains to the south?
Keeps going, I think, yeah.
It would drain to the south, towards Little Beaver Creek?
Eventually get it out, right.
Okay. Now, would that connect with an existing pond to the south?
I'll let Mr. Mormon handle that.
Oh, yeah, that's a, that's an engineer question. I just get a little concerned if the, if the residential properties are even slightly downhill.
Right, and I believe that when the frishess site was built, there was a pipe that was constructed up to the property line.
Okay.
Where it was, they have, they were allowed to pass through the flow from off-site properties through their pond, and they built a pipe stubbed out to this property.
Okay.
And I think what they're doing is they're taking their outflow from their pond, they're taking it to that pipe, so it'll go from their pipe to the frishess pond, and on to the south.
And those, those pipes were sized to begin with, to allow for the increased flow of what's uphill.
Yeah, it'll actually be less, because we, we sized it, I believe that went for the 100-year, for the, for the pre-development event, and, you know, in the post-development condition, they have to detain the water. We have a pretty conservative stormwater ordinance, so the water flow after development leaving the site is a lot less than it was pre-development.
I know we, there's a detention pond at the shopping center that's up there, almost to the corner, and is that pipe, that's piped separately, is it not?
It is, I'm not, I don't think there's a connection to this pond, but it all generally kind of, it does come through, through this site, I believe. It all generally goes to the south.
But it goes south?
Yeah, it's up, it ends up in the creek, right?
All the way into the creek? Okay, fine.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, lady and gentleman, anything else? And if not, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to disapprove SIPS Car Wash, PUD 06-5. Unfortunately, I just feel that the applicant has not demonstrated that there's not going to be a substantial detriment on the surrounding properties, and without a noise study, and without a traffic study, I'm just not comfortable with the conditional use.
Okay.
If we could clarify which agenda item you just made that motion on?
PUD 06-5. Oh, sorry, I'm looking at the wrong thing. I apologize. PUD 19-2?
PC 19-2.
All right.
19-1.
19-2.
Mine says 19-2.
Yes.
Sorry. PC 19-1 CU, SIPS Car Wash. I apologize. The conditional use.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, I need a second.
Mr. Chair, I second.
Okay. Fellow commissioners, remember, a vote in favor of this is to disapprove, okay? Just want to make sure everybody understands. Okay. Anything else for the good of the order? Then I'll ask for a roll call.
Mr. Height?
Yes.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes.
Mr. Schreider?
Yes.
Ms. Akers?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes.
Motion carries, 5-0. And our next item is PC 19-2, the Azra.
Mr. Chair, I move to table PC 19-2, the Azra, indefinitely.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chair.
I have a motion and a second. Can you read the roll?
Mr. Loftus?
Yes.
Mr. Schreider?
Yes.
Ms. Akers?
Yes.
Mr. Height?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes.
Motion carries, 5-0. Boy, that emptied it out. Okay. Our next, our next item is PUD 6-05, Specific Site Plan Number 3, Beaver Creek Business Park.
This is case number PUD 06-5, Specific Site Plan Number 3, on an application filed by EDB International Incorporated, 6375 Shearer Ring Road, Suite F, Dublin, Ohio, 43016. The application requests approval of a specific site plan for 11.82 acres of land, to allow for the construction of Phase 1, which will consist of approximately 50,000 square feet of self-storage warehouses, and Phase 2, which will consist of two office/warehouse buildings totaling 24,000 square feet, located on the west side of Factory Road, and approximately 3,000 feet south of US 35. The property is further described as Book 6, Page 18, Parcel 55, on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. Same, same rules as before, so if we have a representative... There's a relatively familiar face.
Hey, like old times, right, Mike?
Something like that.
So, I'm, you know, I'm not going to give you a lot of particulars on square footage and ingress egress, I'm going to leave that up to city staff, who does that so well. What I'm going to do is talk a little bit about just the philosophy of where we've been, and where we're at now. I'm sure, as most of you know in the room, we've done a lot of development of different types throughout the Beaver Creek area for many years, and, you know, this, this piece was a unique piece, in that we had a neighbor across the street, which is Green County Sewer Plant, which sort of put some constraints to what you're going to want to do there. So, what we wanted to do was obviously have, you know, a type of, of business that, or, you know, type of user that would be compatible with the area, and also not be so, you know, active in the area. We're trying to find something that, you know, would not be, you know, there all the time. I mean, there are some definite negative impacts from, from being across from the sewer plant. So, what we've got, is we've got the store and lock facilities that are there, that adjoin, that sort of butt up to the property, I guess that would be kind of to the south a little bit. My directions may be a little bit off, but anyways. And the thing that we, I hear a lot of talk about being good neighbors and all that, I mean, we feel like we're kind of a good neighbor, because there's no one there most of the time. It's just a storage facility where people can move in and out during restricted hours, of course. And we don't have any vacuums, so we don't make any noise. That's, I think, a plus. So, that's one piece of the puzzle of what we want to do there, or what our zoning was approved to do there. Then the next piece is kind of the office, flex office warehouse kind of product. You know, being in the construction field, you know, myself, and, and there's a lot of types of businesses out there that need some warehouse space to accompany their office space. And, you know, that's something that you've seen kind of scattered throughout that, that area of Beaver Creek. So, that's the kind of product. We're looking to do a product that obviously is attractive from the street, and has good curb appeal. And, you know, we are going to be addressing some issues. Staff will probably talk about, you know, the road that will cut through there, and I know there'll be talk of, you know, the fact that Factory Road does have some issues, it's a township road, it does have some issues with flooding and so on. We actually have access all the way through up to Upper Bell, so that actually is a plus, so we have two different points of ingress and egress. But anyways, we'll be here to answer any questions, and I think I'll turn it over to the city staff. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. The case you have before you is PUD 06-5, the Beaver Creek Business Campus. This is actually Specific Site Plan Number 3 on this site. There was a specific site plan that went, that began their approval process in 2007, and then withdrew before going, it got approved by Planning Commission, withdrew before they went to City Council, and then there was a second Specific Site Plan, which is pretty much a mirrored image of, or an exact copy of this, then went through in 2009, and it did go through Planning Commission and City Council, and got approved at that time. So, this is technically Specific Site Plan Number 3, because there's a five, or a two-year expiration date on Specific Site Plan approvals, so they, their last plan expired, so they're going through it again. But as the applicant stated, they're, they're looking to construct 50,000 square feet of self-storage warehouse facility, that's spread out through eight different small warehouse buildings, a office building for that warehouse, or that self-storage system, and then two 12,000-square-foot office/warehouse buildings, all of this on 11.3 acres. The project's located in the extreme southeast corner of Beaver Creek, just off of Factory Road, and it butts right outside of the township, so this CPUD 06-5 is the last portion of the city of Beaver Creek in that corner. To the east is Beaver Creek Township, to the south is a residential neighborhood, it's also Beaver Creek Township, to the west is R1A, and it's in the city of Beaver Creek. And then to the north is, I believe that's B3 property, it's the East Bell property. And ultimately, Alpha Belbrook Road transects that property. As you can see, the property is currently a vacant property, there is a pond that's on the northeast corner of the property. There is, it's kind of hard to see, but there is a stream that transects the property in this location here. A good portion of this property is within the 100-year flood plain, so there's going to be considerations for that. If this gets approved and the buildings start construction, we have in our local flood plain ordinance says that whatever the base flood elevation is, that says it's in the flood plain, and say it's 797 feet, I think that's close to what it is out there, you can't have a building that's, the base of it can't be any lower, or lower than two feet above that. So, if the base flood elevation was 797, you'd have to build the bottom of your building at 799. And those are just estimate numbers, I'm, I mean, I'm just giving you, I don't know the exact numbers, but that's, off the top of my head, I think that's what it is. Seen here is the Phase 1 and Phase 2 site plan as a whole. As you can see, that they propose an access point onto Factory Road, and as the applicant had stated, there is some issues with flooding down on Factory Road, when we get even a modest amount of rain, you know, this area does tend to fill up with water. And as such, you know, the fire department and ourselves, we required a secondary access point, and so they, they're proposing to construct this road, which will be a private road, all the way up to Alpha Belbrook Road. It's a little over 1,500 feet, so it's quite a road, quite a long distance, and because of the creek that goes through here, they'll have to put two bridges on, over the creek, because they can't remove the creek, they can't touch that creek, it's a federally protected creek, so they're going to have to build appropriate bridging over top of that creek to get that meandering road through. On the south side of the proposed road is the store and lock buildings, there are eight buildings, and the small 800-square-foot office building for those store and locks is here, it's on, just to the other side of the private road. And then on the east side of the road is the two 12,000-square-foot office/warehouse buildings. This is a closer look-up of the, of the self-storage warehouse buildings. Again, there's an 800-square-foot office building, and we did have a, have a crosswalk here, so that when you, if you go in and rent, or even the workers, and they're parking here, they can walk the street across the side, or a crosswalk without them, just having to go across a road without any kind of protection at all. There are eight buildings, two access points to this site, to this particular portion of the PUD. Both are being, proposed as being gated, and there'd be controlled access, so, you know, they haven't decided whether it's going to be a PIN number access, a card access, or anything like that, but there is a controlled access to that portion of the site. And they're proposing to construct a seven-foot fence, actually, a foot and a half of it would be brick, and then decorative aluminum, all the way around the entire store and lock facility. So, it's a decorative, nice-looking fence that will, you know, protect this property from any problems that could arise with a self-storage warehouse. On the, again, on the north side of the road are the two 12,000-square-foot office buildings. Now, because these are office/warehouse, the calculation was a little different, we don't go with all office, and we don't go with all warehouse, in terms of using the calculation to find out the number of parking, so it was split, based on the applicant, and so, based on their numbers, they're required to have 47 parking spaces, and this application shows 95. So, they do have ample amount of parking, we're not concerned with anybody overflowing and parking out onto the business campus. And it could be utilized in the future, should Phase 3 and 4 ever develop, you know, there are three access points that go to the future phase to the north, or, to the west of this property. So, you know, the one access off of the proposed road, and then three access points to any future extension. On this particular plan, north is to the right, that's why west got me thrown off. They do have pedestrian walks throughout the site, around the buildings. One condition that we are proposing is, because there's a lot of parking spaces in a row with no landscaping, and we want to, we tend to limit, or we try not to have any more than 15 parking spaces in a row, we're proposing that they add just landscape islands in these locations here. It's in Exhibit 1, it's attached to your proposed resolution, that's, it'll be able to get extra landscaping. And it may need to be adjusted just a little bit to the left or the right, based on how these doors will line up, so we're not impeding people from being able to pull into the garages and there. But this is just a general idea, we want to see some more landscaping islands out there. They have plenty of parking, so we weren't worried about taking a few of their parking spaces. Real quick, as Planning Commission may know, Shakertown Road will be changing its alignment and rerouting south, actually, beginning this year. They're going to start the project, I believe, in the fall, correct? And so, in the summer. So, yeah, that's coming in the next few months. And so, what will happen, well, Shakertown Road is going to deaden here with a cul-de-sac, and this portion of Shakertown will be removed. And this cul-de-sac, and this small extension, is so that these houses up here still have access to Shakertown Road and a public road. But ultimately, Shakertown is going to come down to the south, and Alpha Belbrook is going to go slightly to the west, and meet up with Shakertown Road at this location, and then ultimately, this will be an intersection where you would take a right, and that's how you're going to get to Factory. So, how it pertains to this application, a little zoomed in, this is where they show their access road to be. So, it's just, just for your information, they're going to have to slightly extend that access road to be able to attach to Alpha Belbrook. I know that there were some questions, how's this, how's Shakertown going to affect this? And that's, that's why I wanted to point that out. It's just a small, slight adjustment to their access road. Again, that's just a closer view of it. It's not very much, but it is a slight change to that. The proposed buildings that they're showing, this is the office/warehouse building, it's a red brick building, it's all brick, with a split-face block base. They are showing a gray asphalt shingle pitched roof, residential in characteristics. And there's conditions, this is the side of that building, so again, you've got the pitched roof, you've got the double-hung windows, and so it does give that residential feel and characteristic. Same thing with the store and lock, it's actually a brick store and lock, with the pitched roof, asphalt chingles, and decorative roof features, and the same brick that is on the storage facility office building. Now, we've only got the front elevation there, and the front elevation here, but there's Condition 20 in your proposed resolution, that requires that four, that architecture to be, those features to be carried on all four sides of the building, of all buildings in this phase, in both phases, so we're quite, we're confident that that brick is going to be, that, that that brick will be extended around all four elevations. They do show an extensive landscape plan with this proposal, showing, you know, I know there is residential properties to the south, it does sit up on a pretty high hill, so, I mean, these are going to be six-foot trees, will they block the view of this? No, not for quite some time, but that's why we had them work to, we worked with them to create pitched roofs. to create pitched roofs, asphalt shingles, and brick buildings instead of a flat-roof metal building that you would see at a typical storage facility. But, we did get some evergreens and decorative shade trees and bushes and shrubs all throughout the site, and so, we're satisfied with what they're proposing in terms of landscaping. Lighting plan, there is a condition, and they actually showed it in their plans anyways, that Phase One, which is this, the store and lock, the maximum, because of the residential proximity, that the maximum pole height for their fixture height will be 16 feet. Now, we'll make sure that, you know, that they're not having the higher lighting. And that does, the trade-off is, you have to have more light poles because the poles shine at a shorter distance, but it does, it does lower the light fixture and, and the, the spreading out of that light. And then, on the Phase Two, onto the east, or to the north side of the road, that they're allowed up to the 24-foot poles. They're proposing two, or two ground signs with this application, one being on the intersection at Alpha Belbrook, and one being on the intersection at Factory Road. They're very similar, a brick base that's used to construct a building. The one at Factory Road had these decorative caps, and so we added a condition that those same decorative end caps be added to the one on Alpha Belbrook Road just for continuity, and because it's an attractive look, and we want to make sure that, you know, what they're doing on one side, that they do on both sides. Staff does recommend approval of the applicant's request. There are 34 conditions in the resolution for your consideration, and I just wanted to point out one thing, that when this was rezoned, the ordinance stated that only 50,000 square feet of store and locks would be allowed in Phase Two, and, and getting through the text, there won't be any individual store and locks be allowed in any other portion of the PUD. So, once we get to this 50,000, it's Phase Three and Four, they can't just extend more store and locks, those are for a list of uses that store and locks aren't included in. So, I just wanted to point that out for anybody who's listening, either for Planning Commission or behind me, that, you know, 50,000 represents the extent of the store and locks unless this PUD were to be amended and rezoned again, but as the zoning stands now, that's the cap. But, I'll be happy to answer any questions following the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, your usual very extensive and complete report. This is a public hearing, so if there are folks here, same rules as before, three minutes, if you would please. If there are folks here who would like to speak in favor of, against, or simply ask a question, please do so. We, if it's a question, we will note that question down, and one of us will be sure and ask it. Don't be shy, come on up.
I'm Tammy Miller, 2629 Thomas Jefferson Drive. I've never come to a planning meeting before, even though I've lived in Beaver Creek for a good while, and I go to church here, and I own a business in-
See what you've missed?
I didn't even realize, I didn't even know how to find this place. But, I am a little bit concerned that it would be right up against the neighborhood in which I live, which is adjacent to this spot. Is there going to be any buffer zone between the backyards of the residential area and then this fence, or is it, how close is the fence, this, it does sound nice, really nice building, really nice barrier, but I just wanted to know how much space there's going to be between the yards and this facility. That's the only thing I'm concerned about.
We'll be sure and ask that.
Good evening, and thank you for letting me talk. My name is John Steves, 394 North Alpha Belbrook Road. I sit on top, as it goes, it's all going to be beneath me, and I appreciate, I do appreciate the subdued lighting and all that, but there's been several comments about Factory Road. Now, living in that area, I know exactly what happens to Factory Road, fact, this happened four or five times since the first of January. It floods, it shuts, and all of that traffic gets up Alpha Belbrook Road. So, I'm just curious, we're addressing, yeah, there are problems with Factory Road, what are we going to do about Factory Road? And the other question I would have is, what are the hours for this facility? I mean, is it, is it 24 hours, can anybody get access all the time? Storage facilities, as beautiful as they are, and I'm not saying they aren't pretty, and that one is a very nice-looking one, they can become centers for problems, and that has occurred before, and I would like to know what kind of security, and how many hours, and what access people are going to have to it, from the neighborhood standpoint, okay? And it's the only two questions I have.
Thank you, we'll be sure and ask them.
Good evening. First of all, thanks for what you do, I know it's a long day, I'm going to try to make this quick so our day can end eventually. This is my first meeting also. I'm retired Air Force, and we loved Beaver Creek, it was our last assignment, and we loved that kids were in sports, schools are great. How this would affect me-
Sir, I'm so sorry, could you state your name for the record, please?
Oh, Mike Stevenson.
Thank you.
Mike Stevenson, okay. So, I had that already, and then I screwed it up. Okay, so, 2690 Terra Trail East. So, this building will be kind of in my backyard, so I'm up on the hill, and then there's a downhill, I see they gutted the woods recently, that whole area where the deer and the antelope used to play, and then the sewage factory is now what I see instead of trees. So, I'm opposed to it for a number of reasons, and the main reason is I'm wondering why it has to be there. You know, there's a protected creek, there's deer, coyotes, foxes, there are beaver in that pond, I've walked back there and seen, and all the other land, pavement, flatlands, everything else all over Beaver Creek, can't they build the same thing maybe in another area? Okay, I'm not anti-business, I'm also not a tree hugger, but I love that Beaver Creek does have a little bit of wildness still left in it, and this seems like that's going totally against the character of the city. Okay? And then I have talked to friends and neighbors, I wish more of them would have come here tonight, but they're concerned with noise, light, litter, possible crime, and then, my question is, I'd like to know operations plan and also a security plan involved with this, because we all know, and we've seen stories about these self-storage units, what can go on in some of them, okay? And then, the last thing, if I still have time, this company is from Dublin, correct? That wants to build this, Dublin, Ohio?
We're from Beaver Creek, Ohio.
Okay, I didn't-
We've been building here since 59.
Okay.
Almost everybody Trump.
Did you identify yourself, sir?
I didn't catch your name, though, so-
Okay, it's Rob Arnold.
Okay. And so, again, the location seems a little fishy, and then I don't, I don't see who's going to benefit from this at all, other than Rob Arnold, okay? That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I knew you were Air Force when you said you wanted an operations plan and a security
Thanks, everyone, my name is Dr. Ronald Stites, I live at 2588 Thomas Jefferson Drive. As Mr. Arnold said, they wanted to be a good neighbor to everyone. I am a neighbor that was not necessarily explicitly addressed, as I live in the township just to the south of that area. I primarily have four concerns, maybe some of these have been addressed, maybe they haven't. Again, this is my first time in a planning meeting, so if they have, take it with a grain of salt. First, obviously, it's come up before, flooding is an issue in this area, everybody knows you build surface lots, floodwater has to go somewhere, it's going to run into the creek, down to little, you know, the road itself, we're not far from the Miami River, the Little Miami River as well, so those are all concerns that I have from a, I guess, from a flood management perspective, from an ecological perspective. There have also been several studies that have been conducted by the National Institute of Health, as well as other federal agencies, that show that water that leaks off of developed surface roads like that can have zinc and other toxic chemicals, that'll be contributing to the waterways, so that's something that I don't know if it's been taken into consideration or not. The third thing is, I guess more so, well, maybe I stopped counting, there are lots of things. On that road, Factory Road itself, you know, there have been some discussion about the impact, potential impact from traffic with regard to the upgrades that are coming to north, or the, you know, Alpha Belbrook Road, as well as making 35 a super air access road or super access highway. It's unclear to me what that impact that might have on entering the facility off of Factory Road, especially since the speed limit on that road is 50 miles an hour, that could create potential hazards as well. And then also, just from more of a good neighbor perspective, if you go to the south, so that lot was cleared approximately three-ish weeks ago, some of the trees started coming down, and in that time, I've actually noticed an increase in wildlife in my neighborhood, so that is something, obviously, that I am concerned, concerned about as well. Obviously, having coyotes or other sorts of animals, beavers, maybe not rabid beavers, but, you know, coyotes themselves aren't necessarily something that you want hanging out in your backyard. So, I don't know then what has all been looked at, what all has been taken into consideration, but those are four or so considerations, or concerns, I guess, I have from my perspective. Thanks.
Thank you.
Craig Herrig, I live at 166 Jamestown Court in the neighborhood to the south of the proposed plan. My two questions, similar to what they've already proposed, is, one, I know that there's two retaining ponds in this plan, and I'm curious if that will alleviate any of the flooding issues on Factory Road, or is it just for the surface areas of this plan? And secondly, the lighting that they plan on for the fence, I know it's going to be at a lower level, but I'm curious if it's directional, that'll be more focused towards the inside of the plan, that it doesn't cause light pollution, for lack of a better term, to the residents to the south. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Gary Petrick, and I actually, I live at 2608 Payden Randolph Road, so I am one of the neighbors where this is directly in my backyard. So, I have a couple of concerns, mostly about my quality of life, or how it's going to change with this development, if it's approved. A lot of the issues have already been discussed, specifically lighting, I know they've torn down quite a bit, and even with directional lighting, and based on the, my second-story house, I'm going to probably overlook some of their facilities, and putting a six-foot-high blue spruce is not going to solve that problem, I do not believe. I'm also concerned about noise, it's not going to be as bad as a vacuum cleaner with the other site discussed, but there will be some, so that leads into the hours of operation. So, if it's key cord access, I don't know if they're going to cut all activity off, let's say at nine o'clock, or some issue or not. The other people brought up crime, or the potential for crime, it's a nice area, I'd hate to see it turn to be less nice, and just statistics, you know, more things will happen with that type of facility there, I believe. People talk about traffic, we know all about the flood problems, so I don't think that's going to really impact the flooding, I think, Craig, it's the river overflows back into the road rather than surface water, but anyway. Another concern I have is with other storage facilities, they tend to pave right up to the fence, then they try to lease parking for big RVs and stuff that won't fit inside of the facility. Am I going to be looking at a side of an RV or not? Is that going to be part of the, the question that could be asked, or put some limitations on what outside storage can be? And lastly, to be a good steward, Green County does have a farmland heritage program, I believe, and would this be a good steward, that they could donate this land to be part of that heritage, to be undeveloped, and possibly even with that pond, if that's a wetland, possibility? You mentioned the creek is federally protected, I wonder if the lake or the pond is as well, or to be a truly good steward of the, of the local community. So, I guess that's all I have. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening, thank you very much. I'm Mike Dahlstrom, I live at 2628 Payden Randolph Road, in the development that is going to be adjacent to this. As you can well imagine, living near a sewage treatment plant has its challenges as it is, and adding additional business and commercial activity in that area is only going to make that lifestyle, that, that way to, the, the value of our property go down. As it is right now, with some of the houses that have been put in, we've lost a lot of the trees, and we basically have, we look right out on the sewage treatment plant from our porch. My biggest concern here is the neighborhood. We have a nice neighborhood, it's isolated, but overall, the community's really good, the crime hasn't been too much of a problem until recently, actually. And I'd hate to see that damaged. Other folks have mentioned light pollution, that sort of thing, and that's a concern for me as well. But, one thing I don't think we've even touched on at all is the traffic issue. The Beaver Creek Soccer Complex is right there, and any additional traffic coming up and down Factory Road and/or Alpha Belbrook is only going to make that worse, in particular on weekends when I would imagine most folks use a storage facility. When people are coming and going, I don't know if you've been down there during a, a weekend when there's one of the large tournaments, you can't get in or out of our neighborhood, there are so many cars, and if you would increase additional traffic in that area, it's only going to make it worse. In addition, there is a self-storage facility literally down Yellow Brick Road over to, by the soccer complex. So, we're adding another facility, I guess, we were told with ZIPS this wasn't a consideration, but I think it's a consideration here. We have a self-storage facility literally less than a mile from this location. As far as the office space goes, we have Russ Research Center, which is continually, apparently, from at least my perspective on the traffic there, getting less and less populated. Why don't we consider reusing that space, or taking advantage of the existing buildings? Finally, is the flooding issue. I will tell you, my yard floods quite regularly, my backyard, additional paved space in the area is not going to help things. When we get any substantial rain, my pump runs pretty much constantly, and we're going to add additional paved, improved space, literally a stone's throw from where I live. I don't think that that's necessarily a good choice. In addition, we looked up kind of the investment group that's aiming for this, and they're not local, I believe they're Edge International. The chief listed person for that person is in Pakistan, for that business-
You've hit your three minutes.
Thank you.
We got a tag team.
Yeah, no, well, yes and no. I'm Jen Dahlstrom, 2628 Payden Randolph. Yeah, my, my concerns are different than his concerns, moms and dads. My, I'm a mom, and there are a lot of kids in our neighborhood, they play on our street, and, and that's just been recently because it's so hard to get kids outside. And so, finally, some people are moving in with kids, and they're playing outside, and now we want to build this, and, and security-wise, I know, it's a, you know, it's going to be dealt with, but it really is a concern for security, just having those cars there, having people that we don't know right there, a seven-foot fence, that doesn't really convince me of safety, and then, I don't, I don't know about self-storage units, do they control what is put into them, or, hmm, there won't be any, like, bombs, you know, things, I mean, because I don't know what they store in those facilities, and I don't know what's built there. So, anyway, if the, the, the other buildings, are they, is that just for storage, or is that going to be then office space, the industrial center that they want to build? I wasn't real clear when they explained that, and the gentleman that came up and talked about it didn't clarify who he was. I mean, he did afterwards, but, just saying, not everybody has been here done this, and we would like, you know, as much information as that we're allowed to have. I appreciate the invitation to come here tonight, and, and yes, I, we can go and- the invitation to come here tonight, and, and yes, I, we can go and look up the plans in this building somewhere, but it doesn't really give us any more information than what we see here. So that's my concerns, is the safety for the kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, that's why we're all here, is to find out all the, all the details. Others? I'm waving my gavel. Anyone else wish to speak? Do we have written input? We do, okay?
Yes, we do. We had one letter submitted from Susan Marticello from 270 Rebel Court, who was opposing the proposed development.
Okay. And that was, just the one letter, correct? Okay. In that case, I will close the public hearing, and I'll start with Mr. Heine again.
Schreider.
I'm sorry.
All right.
So. It's been a long day.
See if I can knock them all out here. So I'll start with the applicant. Let's run them. So let's, so the hours of operation, is it going to be a 24-hour?
Thank goodness for our AV guy. Got it?
Yep.
Okay. 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM are the hours. That's hours that people will be able to access these units through a gated lock. I mean, the nice thing is, I mean, anybody in this area is obviously restricted, so it's not like you're going to have people up against that fence or in that area that, you know, is, you know, hasn't rented storage space and is not already been designated as, you know, an occupant and has been granted permission and access into the area. So, and just, shall I go ahead and clarify the Arnold thing, since it seemed to have come up? EDB International is actually the engineer, they, sometimes the engineer will go ahead and sign the application as the, as the representative of the applicant, which is what that was done. It is, in fact, Arnold Development, which is a development company that's been in the Beaver Creek area for many, many years. So, anyways.
All right. Well, thank you. I think that addresses hours and security and access and things of that sort. So one of the, the dual-purpose building?
Yes.
I'm imagining that as if you are an HVAC contractor, and you wanted to have your storefront, up front for office space, and then keep your materials and trucks and things of that, equipment in the back, right?
Exactly. That's exactly right.
I just wanted to clarify that. Do you monitor what people store in these storage units, or you have a list of what?
We have a list of what-
Probably pretty obvious.
What is and isn't permitted. You know, I mean, I can't say that someone doesn't take something in some unit.
Absolutely.
You know, but, you know, we can, we obviously are there to monitor activity. I mean, usually when you have those types of materials, you're, you know, doing something with them while you're there, and that would probably raise some suspicion at that point, but.
Okay, so will you have someone on-site between those hours?
We will have someone on-site, that's correct.
All right. That's all I got for you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Staff?
Yes, sir.
All right, so the buffer zone for the building is 100-foot.
That is, that's correct. Well, it's not even the building, it's just, it's the paved area, so this is a 100-foot buffer from the edge of that fence to the southern property line.
Okay, so we would expect the fence to be in that same area, the fence?
When it got rezoned, it required, it required 100-foot setback, building and parking setback from 100 feet from the south and 100 feet from Factory Road.
All right. So just, this was rezoned from agricultural to a public-use development in 2007, correct?
Six.
2006?
Six, seven, yeah.
So there's many different things that could be built here just based on that PUD, correct?
Right. In the, in the ordinance, there was a list of allowed uses.
Okay. And this falls within that, obviously, while we're here?
Right.
All right, so I'm trying to address everybody's questions here, but, nope.
Just a few things on, I've had the benefit of going through the same project once in 2009, so I had some conditions come up at that point. We did, in terms of the neighbor that was concerned about cars being parked outside, because you do see that in some stories, we did add a condition that there shall be no outdoor storage, display, rental, or sales at any time of automobiles, recreational vehicles, material, equipment, or machinery, unless approved by planning commission. So they can't park any cars, machinery, wrecked boats, anything like that, out in parking lots of store, unless you guys say it's okay.
Well, I appreciate that, because that was on my list of questions to clarify.
And then, there was also one that prior to the issuance of a certificate of use compliance, that's a certificate that we give saying that you're ready to go. It's separate from a zoning permit, but it's similar. The applicant should submit a security plan for this mini storage units. The security plan shall detail the type and required access restriction, so whether using fobs or PIN numbers or cards, and the location of all security cameras located within Phase One, and the mini storage locking units within Phase One shall be properly secured to the satisfaction of the police department at specific site plan stage and prior to the issuance of the zoning permit. So they're going to have to have a security plan reviewed by the Beaver Creek Police Department before we release any of that zoning permit.
Okay. From a lighting effect, I think the statement was made earlier that you can't-
We're going to require, we're going to require the use of full cutoff fixtures, so they're not going to be able to tilt a light up and shine on the building or far away. It's going to have to, the LED lights is going to have to come straight down and light the adjacent parking area, not flipping it up and shining outward. So they were going to, they're required to use full cutoff fixtures.
All right. And then you might be able to answer this, but we talk a lot about when we build new properties, you can't leave it any worse than what it was when you started. So from the floodwater aspect, anything they do to this property can't negatively affect how things are today.
They will have to detain all additional stormwater runoff that they, from what it is now to what post-buildout, they'll have to account for that.
Yeah, so if somebody's backyard is being flooded now, it's not going to flood worse-
Right.
-based on the plan that's being presented.
That's what they're required to do.
All right. Appreciate the help. Thank you. That's it.
All right. I got a couple of questions for Mr. Burkett.
I'm right here. I'm fast.
It's gonna be a long one tonight, isn't it? Yes. Have we received any input from, from the township at all, in?
I got some late information this afternoon about they're, they're going to have some concerns with Factory Road. Now, I didn't get a chance to dive into those, I didn't get them till right before the meeting. So it is a county road, or it's a township road that's maintained by the county. So ultimately, the widening of that, and anything else they're going to have to do is going to have to be coordinated and approved by the county. You know, the plans show the use of decel lanes into the, into the site. And I don't know if Jeff, if you've been in conversation with, with the county engineer or the township people further than that, if you, if you'd like him to come up and talk about that more.
Okay. Are there any concerns with this cut-through that's going to be a private drive? When we say a private drive, it's going to be privately maintained, but it's going to be open?
Just like any shopping center, street would be, you know, I mean, they're all private.
Are we concerned, we're getting ready to reconstruct the road, and we're going to change the traffic flow before we've even reconstructed this new center, we're going to change, we're going to put a cut-through between two of the roads that are directly affected by?
I mean, honestly, the traffic generated by this would be?
I'm not worried about the traffic, I'm worried about the cut-through traffic, because I live way up that way, and I'm going to cut through there all the time now, especially with the construction happening. So it actually worries me that we're going to completely reshape the traffic pattern in that area with a cut-through. I love seeing cut-throughs, but I'm-
I'll have to defer.
I know there will be abuse, especially in that area when traffic backs up.
Don't tell people.
Yeah, good evening again. You know, the big thing with the second point of access is obviously with the flooding issues on Factory Road, that it's really necessary to have that second point of entry into the property. Without that, there would be periods of time when the road floods and you couldn't get from point A to point B. There's a big driving force behind that right now. But honestly, I think with the different options we're going to be giving people when we extend Shakertown Road and connect that into, into Factory Road and realign Alpha Bell Brook, we're going to have new traffic signals at those intersections also. And I think the motorists will choose to go that route as opposed to this cut-through. But you, you live there, of course, you know.
I live far enough away to not be an issue, but I do live a couple of miles up that way, so I'm just concerned about the cut-through.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. I don't think it'll be detrimental to the traffic flow in the area.
Okay. What about the concerns on, I know Mr. Schreider asked this question, but are there any engineered concerns on exacerbating flooding in the initial areas? I understand that the particular area, we're going to catch all the water that falls there. Is there a worry that this will exacerbate surrounding properties, or should we actually look for it to be slightly drier because it's a bigger pond than what's needed? Trying to get a little bit more information on the-
Right.
The neighboring.
Sure. Our stormwater detention orders is pretty conservative, where typically there's a lot less water leaving the site in the post-development condition than there is in the pre-development condition. So with these ponds functioning, if it's all designed correctly, there should be less outflow. But you know, with the flooding of Factory Road, the one gentleman's correct, where it's more of a factor of the little Miami coming up, and the backwater, the little Miami coming up and getting the road there, so.
Okay. Have we got any input from ODOT at all, as far as, again, I know this is, most of this initial project's being done by the county and-
Right.
The township and the city, but we know that ODOT's going to be involved in the second phase of the 35 corridor realignment. Have they given any inputs, or may have been made aware that we're looking to put a cut-through in a proposed plan that they're doing?
They have not. To my knowledge, there's been no coordination. I know we used to send things to ODOT, I'm not sure if we still do that, but I don't think ODOT's been contacted on this particular project.
Okay.
But I have, had some conversations with the township and the county, though, about Factory Road, so.
Okay. And did they have any concerns that they verbally expressed yet? I know Randy said, or Mr. Burkett said that-
Right.
There was some written input.
Yeah, they had, they had a couple of things. The big thing is, they want to review the detention calculations pretty closely. They're, they just want to make sure everything's done correctly, and they had some concerns about the water coming out of the ponds and the drainage system through the county sewer plant. They wanted to take a good, hard look at that. They also asked that the entire road be overlaid when they widen the street, but they, they didn't, they didn't want the road razed or anything like that.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I do have a couple of questions for the applicant, please. I've got a couple, well, I'll let Mr. Self actually take care of the other inconsistency, but as noted in the narrative, that the height of the buildings will be about 28 feet, but on the actual plan, they're listed as 33.5. So could you help me understand the difference of five and a half feet from the plan to the narrative, and how tall these buildings actually will be? What is the correct number?
Yeah, I'd have to look at it at a drawing to be sure, but I would say, as a general rule, the 28 feet should be, should be accurate. Is that what you said, 28 feet?
Okay, yeah, it's listed in the narrative as 28, and then on the plan, it's listed as 33, so just trying to.
Yeah. Is it wall or roof peak? Yeah, I would say the 28 feet would be.
Okay, so your, your drawings then are incorrect? Is that what?
28 feet as far as the height of the building, or the height of the building?
I'm just looking for, I'm just basing it on the, the plans that you guys have in front of me. It's the site and utility plan?
Well, the, we're talking about the height of the office buildings?
Yes, correct, yep.
The way we measure height on a pitched roof is we measure halfway point between the peak and the fascia board. That's the height of the building. We don't measure all the way to the peak. So the plans show 30 feet, a little over 30 feet to the peak.
So that's the peak, is it 33.5?
And since we measure the halfway point between the fascia board and the peak, that's where I came up with the 28.
Okay, so the actual height is 33.5 at the peak? Okay, but, okay.
The legal height is?
At the very, at the height of the building is 33.5 then?
According to the planning department.
Okay. All right, and now I will remember that for future. Where was the gate going to be located for access? I'm assuming it's this?
It's that, right where you see that throat right there, you know, coming in, yeah.
Okay, and then it's going to be a circular flow back through?
Yes.
Okay. Buildings, where the gate be? What about construction timing? When are, again, I know we're not holding you to any particular date, when is the expected start and end date for Phase One and Phase Two of construction?
Well, we will probably start, I mean, this kind of depends on when we get through this process, but the construction of that road itself will be the first phase of the project, because that's a pretty big, pretty long 1,200, I think it's 1,200 linear feet, so that's a pretty long piece of, piece of street to put in. That's about a three-to-four month project just to do that. The rest of the project will be phased out over like six-to-nine month period, once the street's in.
Okay. So when do you, maybe ask that a different, when do you expect the construction to begin, and when do you expect the construction to end? I'm looking specifically for quarter, quarter one, quarter two?
Well, in phase, in this particular phase, we're looking at a 12-month cycle from when we start to when it ends. Now, we will have future phases that will-
Sure, completely understand.
Have construction in them.
So I'm going to ask a third time, when do you expect construction to start? I mean, I'm looking for a date, a range of months, a time period, yeah, and I understand 12 months.
June, July timeframe?
Okay, so we're going to look to do this at the exact same time as we're going to rebuild Alpha and Factory and-
Something like that.
I have no further questions. Thank you very much. Your dice.
I have a question about these office warehouse facilities, and I know Mr. Schreider talked, touched on it a little bit. Do we anticipate, so for example, if it's an HVAC office with storage in the back, what is the, is there enough room for delivery trucks? They're not going to be large semi-delivery trucks, would they be, I guess, kind of, what's your thought process on that?
Most of these types of businesses, if they have deliveries, they would have to have a small mini forklift or something to get them off the truck. We're not going to have loading docks and things back here. It's not that type of facility.
Is there enough space behind those buildings in the event that they do need to get a semi back there, they can?
Oh, yes.
And would there be a limitation on the hours, just like there is on the storage facilities, on when deliveries?
We haven't really done that, but yes, I mean, there could be, yeah.
Um, let's see. What are your thoughts, and I think that this will also go to staff, but what are your thoughts on placing some sort of gate on that northern entrance so that it's only accessible if and when the road floods?
We don't have an issue with it personally. I know at one point, that even came up, Shoff, Shoffy had mentioned it to me earlier. The fire department did, yeah. Again, that's one of those issues that, you know, we are flexible on as far as that goes.
Okay. And then do you have, I mean, I realize it's a storage facility, estimates on traffic?
Do what?
Estimates on traffic.
Oh, it's pretty, I mean, you guys all drive by storage facilities, and you never, it looks like there's never anyone there. I mean, you know, that's part of the good thing about a storage facility, they're just, they don't generate, they're not big traffic generators.
Right. Okay. That's all I have for you. Staff? Mr. Burkett?
He is.
Got my Fitbit on, so I'm good.
Mine keeps telling me I need to move. Okay, keep that in mind.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. What are your thoughts on the gate?
I mean, it's, it's doable. I mean, when we're talking about having somebody out there to man it, I mean, that, that can be problematic in terms of, if for some reason that person is not there, or something comes up and somebody's in this facility, and then that's when that floods, they can't get out through the gate that's closed. I mean, whether that happens or not, I don't know how realistic that is, but I mean, we're just, it's just a situation that could happen.
Absolutely, no.
If it floods and there's nobody open the gate, then they're stuck. I mean, I've viewed this as any other road that's going through any other, like, any shopping center or something like that. I mean, it may be attractive to some people to use as a bypass, but I, as Jeff said, once they put the traffic lights at Shakertown and Alpha Bell Brook, and Alpha Bell Brook and Factor, I think that it's going to be, that's going to be the attractive way to go left or right.
This is going to bring back flashbacks to Newton. But what about speed bumps to prevent people from driving through?
I think that that would, if you've got trucks making deliveries, I think that you're going to cause a lot of noise with speed bumps, that's going to cause-
All right. My last question is in regards to the road as well.
Okay.
I understand this is a private road. What are our requirements for maintenance? And the only reason I ask is the road that runs back behind Milano's and?
Behind Milano's. Yeah, I mean, they're going to be required to maintain it. I mean, it won't be us maintaining it. That particular project was a little unique because it was constructed over many years, and so they only put the first course of asphalt down, and then we're waiting for the project to complete before they just put the second course of asphalt down. So all the wear and tear was on that first, and that's why it became like the moon. So this one, I mean, there's a condition that they build the entire road this, in the first phase, so they're not going to, they're going to have to build that all at once. I mean, they're not just going to put the first course of asphalt down. If there's, if that's a condition you guys would want to add, something about, you know, maintain it to a good order per the requirements of the city engineer, I mean, I wouldn't have a problem with that. I mean, I anticipate that they would do that on their own, but if that would make me more comfortable, I mean, I don't think that'd be a problem adding a condition like that. I think we've done that in other areas.
Okay. That's all the questions I have. Thank you, sir.
Hello, sir. I'll keep you up here. So I think the question keeps coming up about this, you know, this private road because, you know, when Factory floods, traffic in the morning backs all the way up almost to Stoffer Drive. So people are going to, people are going to love that private road.
If it's flooded, they won't be able to get down to the south, though.
So again, you could have, you could have, well, even if it's not flooded, it's still backed up quite a bit in the mornings. Doesn't bother us, I don't think, but I think Mr. Arnold's going to have a lot more traffic going through his private road than he thinks.
I think with this, construction of this, these two intersections, that's going to be a lighted road, and then that's going to be a lighted road, and so all this is getting eliminated, actually. Everything in red, that's going away. So I think that you're just not going to see that backup, because the backup is because there's cars coming out of this side of Yellow Brick Road, and when they're offset like that, it's, nobody knows who's going at what time. But they're relining Shaker Town, so it lines up directly, and that's the one, it's a cohesive actual functional intersection with the traffic light and crosswalks and things like that. And that's happening starting this summer.
Yeah, we're just throwing that out there. Between those two time zones that Mr. Loftus is going to be going through there on a daily basis through that private drive.
Okay.
I think that's it for staff. I appreciate it. Mr. Arnold, you've got a couple more seconds. I know we got you running up here as well. Just to clear up some of the other questions from the audience, we've talked about flooding, I think, the wildlife, I understand. I mean, you're building on your land.
And flooding, to put anybody's mind at ease, we're lower than any residential that's around us, so we're not running water uphill. So there shouldn't, I mean.
The wildlife, the heritage farmland, all those concerns.
Yeah, we're not really interested. We've donated a lot through the years, and we're not interested in donating this piece at this point.
The, just to kind of lay the fears, what do you think is going to go into 3 and 4? I know you haven't planned them yet, but is it going to be similar?
Yeah, it'll be a similar product. It won't be, as Randy mentioned, it won't be store-in-locked, but it'll be similar to the office warehouse type product.
In the storage units, do you plan on having lights, electric, heated, cooled? All the above?
All the above.
And then Russ Research Center, just to clear that one up, I believe Ohio University.
Well, for that, that's a totally different product. I mean, that's not even in the same.
Just checking them off, sir. I appreciate it. That's all from me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, my buddy. I don't have any questions about the road at all. However, one of these drawings, actually, it's the sketch of the layout overlaid over an aerial, show the store-in-locks oriented east to west. Then when I flip over to the next page, it shows them oriented north to south.
Right.
Will the real, will the real store-in-locks please stand up?
Yes, north to south. I spoke to a wise old man, you may know, not old man.
Be careful.
Maybe I better not even say now. No, Mitch Kossler and I were sitting around, and we were talking about this, and Mitch said, hey, Rob, little advice, you need to run those buildings the other way, because in the winter, you know, sun is going to help melt that way better. Don't tell Mitch I said that.
Well, my concern is that if you run them east to west, sorry, north to south, there are no long runs of building that have to be lit. You've got the ends facing the closest houses, not the sides of the building, and that makes a difference from a lighting standpoint for the neighbors. So the correct orientation is north to south with the broad sides of the building facing east and west. Got it?
Correct.
Good. Okay. Got that cleared up. And you said that the units will have electricity inside?
Correct.
Okay. But do you have restrictions against people using those, like for a shop?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So somebody's not going to be restoring a car, building an airplane, or refinishing a boat in there?
No.
It's strictly dead storage?
That's correct.
Just as an aside, I may have another question for you before I pick on staff. Just as an aside, it's been my experience that when vacant property develops, as our city engineer pointed out, it usually improves the drainage for surrounding property. It can't make it worse, because that's in, that's part of the law, but it usually improves it. We've had a number of situations where neighbors who were concerned about more runoff, actually it turned out there was less once the property developed. I may have something else for you, but I've got a couple of questions for staff before I forget them. There's a 100-foot setback.
Correct.
On the south side to the closest residential property.
Correct.
I'm thinking that even given the 100 feet, we might want to consider a berm to put those little trees on. We've got 100 feet in there, and birmingham it might help. And another thought would be, instead of having, along that south side, instead of having a two-foot solid wall with decorative fence above it, make that a solid wall on that side. Since this is, this property is lower than the residential, that would even be a better job of screening than a fence. And what are your thoughts on that? One of the, I don't think we would need the solid wall and a berm.
Right, I mean, I would be concerned with the berm, because I don't know what that, I mean, just to throw it out there, I don't know what that would do to how the storm water would run off.
Drainage.
I mean, it's a whole.
Okay.
Thing. A solid wall, I mean, that's something that can be, I mean, I'm not opposed to it. It's, I mean, you can ask the applicant what their thoughts are on that, but I wouldn't have a problem with that.
Okay. And another thought, having used several store-in-locks before, some of them, rather than having pole-mounted lights, they have lights mounted on the building up under the eaves. That would be even less light spread than pole lights.
See, I'm concerned, I've had those in other developments in the city. There's one off of Lakeview Drive where they used to light their parking lot, they used building wall packs.
No, I mean, strictly in the store-in-lock area, just in the store-in-lock area.
Yeah, I mean, if they want to have.
Along the rows between the two, between the buildings.
Right, yeah, no, I wouldn't have a problem with that. I thought you meant lighting the parking lot with building.
No, 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 I'm talking, I'm trying to keep as much light away from the residential properties as I can.
Yeah, I would anticipate that they would use wall pack lighting between the buildings rather than putting a pole up.
Okay.
There's no islands for them to put the poles in anyways, so they would.
Okay, well, I, you know, they could put the poles on the ends of the buildings, which would kind of defeat the purpose, when you get right down to it.
Right.
Well, I'll ping that off of our applicant. Are those, I guess I do have a question about the road. Are those going to be bridges, actual real bridges, or are they going to be culverts?
From the plans, they say they're con-span bridges.
Okay, okay.
I mean, I didn't condition it they have to be.
No, no, I'm just asking for information.
Sure.
And I know this has been zoned commercial for at least 13 years. This has been shown on the land use plan as commercial development even before that, was it not? I'm putting you on the spot. But I think, I think that VPA was.
I think so. I think we split it where the hill is. I think once you go up the hill, that's where the residential, and then once we come down the hill.
And from there, actually, all the way to 35, that was the erstwhile mall site until they found out how much fill they had to put in.
And put it up in North.
So that's been zoned, that has been shown on our land use plan even before 2006.
Right, yeah.
As commercial.
Correct.
So everybody knew that, if you checked their land use plan. Okay, I think that's all the questions I have. Let me get Mr. Arnold up there one more time and run those, those two thoughts I had. One about the putting a solid wall along the south side rather than the fence, simply as, just for a good neighbor thing, and also the building-mounted lights in the store-in-lock area, since you're closing at 9 o'clock anyway. I imagine you'd leave some lights on overnight simply for security.
You know, the type of light that's going to get generated from there is not much different than what you're going to get from a residential type of setting. So they're going to throw as much or more light on us than us, than the other way around. I mean, in reality.
Well, I know you can't have any foot candles off-site.
Yeah, we can't have any off-site anyway, so, you know, that is an absolute. The wall, the problem with the wall is, you know, you like to have the openness so that you can see through it. You know, privacy sort of tends to make, embolden people, you know, if there was a crime situation or whatever, it creates dark spots or whatever, and it does tend to maybe embolden someone to think, oh, you know what, there's a nice little spot where I can scale this and hop over and can't be seen.
Well, that's what the razor wire on the top is.
So anyways, I mean, you know, you can approach that from a lot of different angles. I mean, I don't know that we really would be that keen on the idea of a solid wall.
Okay, well, I'm thinking, sorry, I'm not thinking about you, I'm thinking about the neighbors.
Right.
And if that would help in terms of what they see, I realize they'll still see part of the building, but it won't be, it won't be quite as industrial-looking if there's a nice finished wall there rather than just a fence. But I'll leave that up to my fellow commissioners. I think that's all I got for you, but thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, folks, second helpings. Think we've answered everybody's questions? Okay. Do I have, do I have a motion?
Sir, I motion to approve PUD 06-5, Site Specific Plan Number 3, with the attached 34 conditions.
Okay.
As written.
Okay.
I mess this up every time. If I want to add or not change, add to a condition, do I need to do that first legally?
No, go ahead and, you can go ahead and do it now.
Okay.
And then we'll, we'll discuss it, and if the maker.
So that motion will fail for lack of a second.
Right.
Right. And then you can make the same motion.
There you go.
Okay.
Far away.
So do I make the motion and then change it, or?
I would make the motion to, is it going to be a motion to approve the tweaked condition?
They're just voting on changing a particular condition at this point.
All I want to do is add to a condition. So what do I need to do? Do I need to move to add to the condition, or add the condition?
No, no, you just make, move to approve with condition X changed to read YZ.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I move to approve PUD 6-5, Specific Site Plan Number 3, with the attached 34 conditions, but with condition 9 modified to add, Business Campus Drive shall be maintained in good order at the discretion of the city engineer. Please.
Okay. I'm waiting for a second, gentlemen, unless you have something you want to add.
Motion fails for lack of a second.
Okay.
She simply means that nobody else on the commission wants to support the tweak to that particular condition.
Right. It's basically the maintenance of the road is within the zoning code. They have to maintain that road.
I mean, they don't be responsible for it.
Exactly. So, I mean, it's a foot salt, but it's required to be maintained anyway. Okay, folks, I'm looking for a motion that somebody will second. Please.
Mr. Chair, I motion to approve PUD 06-5, Site Specific Plan Number 3, with the attached 34 conditions, as written.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, you second.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Anything else for the good of the order before we vote? Read the roll.
Mr. Schreider?
Yes.
Ms. Akers?
Yes.
Mr. Height?
Yes.
Mr. Loftus?
No.
Mr. Self?
Yes. Motion carries 4-1, and we are going to take a break. And we're back again. With only three more public hearings to go. The next one is PUD 18-4, Specific Site Plan 1, Indian Ripple Road.
This is case number PUD 18-4, Specific Site Plan Number 1, on an application filed by Yolo Development, 3500 Pentagon Boulevard, Suite 500, Beaver Creek, Ohio, 45431. The application requests approval of a specific site plan to allow for the development of a 9,800-square-foot retail building on 1.25 acres of land. The property is located at the northeast corner of Harbor Drive and Indian Ripple Road. The property is further described as Book 3, Page 19, Parcel 95 on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. Once again, this is a public hearing, so I'm sure we have a representative of the developer here, or perhaps the developer himself.
Yeah, John Kopelcheck with Yolo Development, Mill Development, 3500 Pentagon Boulevard. I never thought I was going to be somewhat thankful for being fourth in line tonight, but I'm glad I'm not sixth or fifth. Yeah, so Melissa pretty much covered everything. You know, we came through with zoning and finished that up at the beginning of this year, bought the land, and really wanting to start this as quick as possible. So we have half of the 9,800 square feet taken up already, and once we go through this process and hopefully get approved, we'll start in earnest as a, kind of answering that timing question. Is 9,800 square feet retail medical office building right there at the corner of Indian Ripple and Harbor. That's about it.
Great, thank you.
Case you have before you is PUD 18-4, it's the Indian Ripple Retail Building, Specific Site Plan Number 1. Again, the applicant's requesting approval of a 9,800-square-foot multi-tenant retail building on about an acre and a half. Project's located in southern Beaver Creek. It's just to the east of the intersection of Darst and Indian Ripple Road, on the north side of the road. Seen here is a outline of the one and a half acre vacant lot. You can see it's mostly vacant. It was, it was, there was a structure there at one point, and then as part of the 2000, the early 2000s development, they did remove the structure. There is still a curb cut off of Harbor Drive and an old driveway pad, but other than that, the site is vacant. Seen here is the proposed site plan, and just for your orientation, Indian Ripple Road is here on the left side of the page, so north is to the right again. So I apologize for the misorientation of the plan, but again, right is north. As you can see, they propose one access point off of Harbor Drive, no access, direct access from the site from Indian Ripple Road, so that's important to keep. We try to reduce curb cuts onto the major thoroughfares, and so, with this single access point to Harbor Road, that's a positive for this site. You can see that they do show two-way traffic that will be able to circumnavigate the site. In terms of parking, they're required to have, based on the uses, you know, we looked at, because they didn't have specific tenants right away, we just looked at what is the requirement for generic retail, and based on their numbers, they're required to have 40 parking spaces, and they show 58. So, they have ample parking. You know, they have parking in front of the building, between the building and Indian Ripple, as well as parking to the rear, and then some parking along Harbor Drive. The dumpster that they're proposing is going to be down in the, well, it's the northeast corner of the property, and there is conditions that they use the same materials on any enclosure as they do construct the main building. Now, again, here's an overlay, and now, this one is north to south correctly, so just to give you an idea how it relates to the buildings around it, the construction, and then there's the, I believe it's the old riffles is to the right of that, off to the east, and then there's casanos, and then the River Valley Credit Union also, to the south. Seen here is a proposed rendering of the multi-tenant building. What they're showing is a single-story building that is primarily comprised of gray stone and shades of gray stone, dark ephes, and dark brick on the building. And so, it's a good combination of natural architectural features and products. The rear, we didn't get plans for the rear of the building, but there is a condition that they do bring that stone, or that brick base and the stone features all the way around to the back of the building, so they will have four-sided architecture features because from the, ultimately, their proposed, the second phase is where the storm locks go, but you will be able to see the back of that building from anywhere on Harbor Drive, and as well as from the storm locks and from the whatever is back in the Indian Riffle Lot. In terms of landscaping, they do show a very well landscaped plan. You know, they've got the evergreen bushes and shrubs out front that will require them to plant them at 24 inches, and that'll be to help block the headlights of cars parking, so they're not shining headlights directly out on the Indian Ripple Road, and the same as in Harbor. And they got a good amount of landscaping in the perimeter islands, as well as on the interior islands. In terms of lighting, you know, it's a pretty standard lighting plan. They do show the use of 20-foot poles throughout the site. There is a condition that they be within any island, they can't be into parking spaces, and that they do use full cutoff fixtures. In terms of signage, they do show one ground sign. Now, this is, this is not a ground sign just for this small multi-tenant retail building. This is going to be utilized as the tenants all up Harbor Drive. So, it's similar to what you would have out at Woodcraft Commons there on Commons Drive, where they use it for several different tenants. So, it's not just for the four tenants that they're, or three tenants that they're going to have in this building, but it's the other tenants that post their construction, and there's, I think there's a daycare back there, and then a few other companies. And so, these will all be visible, or this will be a sign for that entire development. That's why it's, you know, seven foot tall, on a stone basin wrap. Staff does recommend approval of the applicant's request. There are 22 conditions in your resolution for your consideration, and I'm here to answer any questions following the public hearing. Thanks.
Thank you very much. It's a public hearing, so is there anyone here who wishes to speak about this? I'm not seeing a lot of volunteers. Last chance? Do we, did we have any written input?
No.
Okay. Last chance, close the public hearing. I'm going to start with Ms. Akers this time.
I have no questions, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, no questions.
Okay.
No questions.
I don't have any questions, I just want to make a statement. This is a very well-laid-out site plan. It's landscaped beautifully, not just to meet the minimums. I just got to say, I'm pretty impressed with what I'm seeing here. I wish we saw more that looked like this. Traffic's taken into account, you're overdoing the parking, really, really appreciate that, so no questions.
I'd be terribly remiss if I didn't have a question. The parcel to the east is also retail, is it not? At least, it's partly retail. I would suggest to my fellow commissioners, since I can't add it without passing the gavel, that we add a cross-easement condition as number 23, since the parcel to the east is, first of all, is retail, and second of all, they've got pavement almost to the lot line. It would make sense, even if they don't build their half, to put this in now. That way, when the folks to the east come in for some kind of a modification, we can require that. It simply helps out the traffic flow on Indian Ripple Road. If you want to go from one of those retail establishments to another, it will make it easier for them.
Mr. Self, my only comment would be, there's pretty significant grade change from that site to our site already.
Really?
And we sit down really far compared to that site.
Okay.
So, it would be, I don't even know if we could do it engineer-wise and create the slope that's necessary for a pass-through.
Is there that much difference? Reason I ask is that-
I think so.
I got bit on Target 15 or 20 years ago, and I was told that there was too much grade separation, and there wasn't, there wasn't any out by the road. But if there's, if it's basically a physical impossibility, I can understand that.
I know that our site sits low. There was the discussion for retaining wall between ourselves and Indian Ripple already.
Okay.
I think we did get away from that.
You know, that's going to cause a problem.
And that site sits well above our site, and even the high point, which is that side we're grading to really level the pad out. So, I think it's pretty significant grade change, to the point where, like, we were discussing retaining walls potentially. So, my concern would be that it's not necessarily easily done by just putting it in there.
Okay.
Is my concern.
Yeah, I didn't see a topo in our packet, so.
Yeah, I'm trying to see if even the grading plan would show. It doesn't really reflect the other parcel, so it's hard to say.
I was got bit once before on this, and it took us, took us 15 or 16 years to get that access from, between Target and the center to the north. So, I just wanted to make sure that, if it's not doable, it's not doable. I understand that.
If we could word it in such a way where, say, an easement shall be placed at the, with, per the review of the engineering department, whether or not it's feasible to construct.
Yeah, right.
I mean, we can add that now, and then-
Sure.
And then, the engineer can determine, our engineer can determine whether it's-
Yeah, that's not forcing anything that can't be done.
Right.
I feel a little more comfortable with that.
Can I just have one clarifying question?
Sure.
So, the easement itself is put in place in case that happens, it's not saying to construct that now?
Correct. Yeah, that would just be, if it's feasible engineering-wise, and-
And traffic requires it?
In order for it to actually take place, the owners of the parcel to your east would have to agree to it, and that would probably happen if they came in with some kind of a modification to what they have now, then we can include that as a condition. We've done that before.
And they would pay for it.
Where we got one side, and then we had to wait to get the other.
Okay.
So, this is not-
So, just really putting a placeholder there that it could potentially happen?
Correct. That it could happen if it's feasible from an engineering standpoint.
Okay.
So, we're not, we're not making you do something that would be very difficult to do. And anyway, my fellow commissioners have to suggest that. Okay, anything else on this, lady gentlemen? Okay, then I need a motion, and I would suggest we do that, we add that 23rd condition regarding easement, if it's engineer, if it's engineerially feasible. I'm sure staff can give us some good words on that. Well, I got to have somebody, I got to have somebody make the motion.
I mean, you could say, an easement to the, or show a final record plan that has an easement, a cross-access easement to the property to the east, so long as it's determined by our city engineer that such access is feasible?
Yeah, I mean, can we put some, some, like, just say, basically, if the city deems it necessary for traffic improvement-
Right.
And is feasible from an engineering perspective?
I guess my concern with adding that is, we don't have a turn lane going into that other-
Some uncontrolled access.
Yeah. There's no turn lane going into that other shopping center there, so I don't want to add that as a throughfare and slow down traffic on Indian Ripple without the right-hand turn lane.
There's a turn lane. You mean for a right, right turn or left turn?
Mm-hmm, the right turn.
You're adding traffic to an area that's not designed for more traffic.
Yeah, because you have a D cell lane that leads you here, but you don't have anything here, so you're going to add more traffic to a non-D cell lane. I don't think I like that.
That's my concern.
Okay. Well, I'm waiting for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I motion to approve PUD 18-4, Site Specific Plan Number One, with the 22 attached conditions, as written.
Mr. Chair, I second that motion.
Okay, what motion is the second? Anything else, folks? Okay, read the roll, please, ma'am.
Ms. Akers?
Yes.
Mr. Height?
Yes.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes.
Mr. Schreider?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes. That's the reluctant, that's, it will come back to haunt you if we made a mistake. And looking forward to seeing it. It is a really nice design. I echo my fellow commissioners, you got an excellent design. We need more of those in Beaver Creek, so, thank you. Okay, we're getting dangerously close to the end. This is, next public hearing is PUD 18-2, Specific Site Plan One. This is a Holiday Inn Express.
This is case number PUD 18-2, Specific Site Plan Number One, on an application filed by Miami Valley Hospitality LLC, 2919 Ambrosia Lane West, Xenia, Ohio, 45385. The application requests approval of a specific site plan to allow for the development of a four-story, 87-guest-room Holiday Inn Express on 2.402 acres of land. The property is located on the west side of Esquire Drive, approximately 150 feet north of the intersection of Lakeview Drive and Esquire Drive. Further described as Book Four, Page Five, Parcel 104 on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. And I'm presuming we have someone here? I figured it had to be you.
It had to be me, that should sound like a song or something. Mitch Cosler with Cosler Engineering, 545 Hilltop Road, Beaver Creek Township. To not belabor the issue at late hour of the evening, I will just say a couple little things. The stormwater runoff on this site was, the detention was previously accommodated in downstream ponds and stuff like that. However, with the change in EPA regulations in the last few years, we have to provide stormwater quality control, so we have a small stormwater quality control pond. It's actually not small, it's a pretty good size, but it allows for the improvement of the water quality and holding it for 48 hours. So, we, you look at it, it's not a full-blown detention pond, but it's a water quality pond. And I think that's basically it. We work with the fire department, city staff, we moved two of our access points to better accommodate the fire department's access to the fire hydrants and fire department connections, and we moved entrance, main entrance off of Esquire Drive on the east side of the property. We moved it north to line up with driveways on a building, commercial buildings to the east. Basically, that's all I have to say. I'll be available for any questions. Amar Janey is here, he's one of the owners. If they have any questions with him, with him, thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
The case you have before you is PUD 18-2. It's the Holiday Inn Express, it's the Specific Site Plan Number One. The applicant's looking to construct a four-story, 87-room hotel on a little over, or a little less than two-and-a-half acres. Project's located in northern Beaver Creek on Esquire Drive, just south of the intersection of Esquire and Commons Drive. It's the one empty lot that's out there within that PUD. Just to the north, that's the National Tire and Battery, and then the Woodcraft Commons that we had talked about earlier, Mike's Car Wash, there's some professional office buildings to the south, and then Wallabees, I believe, or former Wallabees, is just to the east of this area. And you can see the lot is relatively vacant. There is a good amount of trees and ground cover and foliage back there on the western side of the site, but the front end of the site is fairly vacant of anything. There is a sidewalk that transverses the site from the entire length of the site. There is, as you can see, a break in that sidewalk. That was, when this sidewalk was constructed, I guess that was never built in anticipation of imminent development. That's been vacant there for as long as I can remember, at least 2006, if not earlier. So, as part of this process, you know, we'll finally get the sidewalk completed in that area. Again, the property, the map is so new, I mean, it was rezoned just late last year, so the map hasn't even been updated yet, but this area in yellow is the PUD, it's the new PUD 18-2, and it was specifically rezoned for this hotel. So, I mean, what they're looking to do does fall in line with the zoning of the property. Seen here is the proposed site plan. They do show two access points to the site, one being directly off of Esquire Drive here on the north end of the, oh, north end of the site. And then, there's a second access point that's, when Woodcraft Commons was originally built, it was anticipated all along that there was an access easement, and there was going to be a secondary access for whatever has gone back here. So, their second access point falls directly off of this existing stub that is out there now. So, when you enter the site, there's going to be two-way traffic all the way throughout the site, and also, there's a parking lot on the west end, and there's a parking lot on the east end, fronting Esquire Drive, and also a covered drop-off area on the north end of the building and the front of the building. In terms of parking, you know, based on the number of rooms and the calculations, they're required to have 92 parking spaces, and that's what their plans show, it's 92 parking spaces. So, they do meet all the requirements that we have in the zoning code for requirements. And there is very specific 50-foot setback from the western property line, as well as building setback from the eastern property line, and this application has met those setbacks that were set forth in the PUD, the PUD 18-3. This is just, kind of give you a little easier view of the site. The pond that Mr. Cosler was talking about is going to be here, just to the south of the building, I'm sorry, to the west of the building. And it's a small, it's a large water quality pond, but it's a small pond relative to the site. They will have sidewalks that go around, all around the building, and they are going to have a sidewalk stub that goes from this site out to the existing sidewalk system on Esquire Drive. Seen here is the proposed elevations. This will be, this is going to be the northern elevation. You can see that on all the elevations, it's, all four elevations, if I get to the next one, they have the stone veneer that is the first floor. And then, the red area, it's kind of hard to see in these photos, but the red area where it's, it's in ephes, but they're going to stamp it to make it look like brick. You know, we've done that in a lot of cases, the Spring Hill Suites has got that, and actually, the Pentagon Tower has some ephes that stand to look like brick. The dark brown is also that stamped ephes brick, and it's on the end of the one side of the building, and a majority on the north side of the building. So, the red is going to be brick, the brown is going to be brick, and then this light tan, as well as the white over the entryway, is just this, the smooth ephes. So, it's a ephes- ephesus accent wall, I guess. Both the north end of the building and the south end of the building show this, this stone veneer tower feature, and then you can't really see on this photo, but there is an ephesus cornice system, and we had them design that so it looks like, similar to the one that was either, it's the one at Spring Hill Suite, so there is kind of a cohesive, you know, just a design theme that kind of runs throughout the area, you know, there's some of these, this type of cornice that's at the, it's slightly like the one at the hospital and some of the mall area and stuff like that, so it does match the theme of the area. And just to give you a show, a, show a close-up view, this is that stamped brick feature, and then the stamped brick feature. They did a good job on the landscape plan, one thing I wanted to point out, there is 20 feet or so of this area on the west side that they're not going to touch with the grading or the, or the, any part of the construction, so we want to ensure that that doesn't later on decide, well, we want to dump something there or take something out so we can put stuff there. So one of the requirements is that they put a, a construction fence at 20 feet away, and then call it a no-grading zone. I don't like to call them no-cut zones, because those give us headaches five years from now, if a tree gets, if a tree dies, then nobody's around to cut it if it, if we don't, if it's a no-cut zone, so then there's dead trees standing everywhere. So we, we call it a, a no-grade zone, and then require them to remove that fence after the grading is over. And that's to help protect the residential properties that are immediately to the west. But one thing we did add is, there's the single-story professional suites to the south, and to act as an additional buffer and give it transitional screening, I know it's, it's commercial next to commercial, but we want to give a little conditional, transitional screening, we added a condition, they add some extra evergreen trees along that southern property line, as well as some shrubs and bushes around the perimeter of the building. That's in the conditions of approval, and, and I just think that that'll help ease the transition of a single-story next to a four-story building. Their lighting plan, it's just kind of a mess there, but it does meet the requirements in the foot candles, and they're going to use fixtures, you know, they show 16-foot poles, or they, they, they asked for 22 and a half foot poles, but we added a condition that it'd be, be no taller than 16 feet, because, of course, they're the residential to the west, and we want to, you know, maintain that, that separation, and the lower, the lower lights will help do that. In terms of signage, they, they proposed two signs on the building, on the, one on the north and one on the east, each of the signs, well, the, the logo sign is six by six, and then the Holiday Express and Suites, if it, I mean, this is all one sign, but that portion of it is 12 by six. No problem with that, that size of signage, you know, it's over 40 feet off the ground, setback from the road, and, and it'll help people find the building, too. They don't have any proposed ground signs at this time, we did add a condition, if they want to come back and add a ground sign, and it has to follow the B2 standards, I believe it was B2, but, but they have to use the, the base that matches the building and, and follow the guidelines that we have set forward. Staff does recommend approval of their request, subject to the conditions in the staff reports, which there are 23, and I'll be happy to answer any questions following the public hearing, thank you.
Thank you. Answered all my questions. It is a public hearing, so if there's anybody out there that would like to speak about this, step right on up. I can see we're underwhelmed. Any written input? Yes?
Yes, we did receive an email from Charles Dean Jr., which is the property owner of the condominium building to the south, and he is requesting that an earthen raised barrier be installed along the southern property line.
That would be the?
Bottom.
Okay, that would be the dentist's office?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Nobody else wants to speak? I'll close the public hearing, and you go.
The applicant can come up, please? Either one, all of you.
Don't fight over it.
It's up to you guys, it's, it's about the berm, it's about the, about Mr. Dean's Would you be hesitant about placing a earthen barrier towards the southern area?
We, we looked at that, I did a cross-section, and I didn't bring it with me, but the, if you look at, on the grading plan, it'll show about, there's three and a half feet, I believe, of fall from the sidewalk, that, okay, there we go, the south sidewalk, more of a service sidewalk for the employees to come into the back of the building when they come to work. But from, you know, that point there, down south to the property line, there's about three and a half foot of fall down towards the office building, and we looked at putting a three-to-one slope on it, and we're kind of chasing the existing slope a little bit, and the best we could fit in there would be less than two foot high at the sidewalk point. So right away, I looked at it, and I said, well, we've got, you know, pine trees around in the front, and a series of them along the, I said, it would look better, I mean, it really would look more rural, more woodsy, to have a bunch of pine trees staggered around, because we've also got some shade trees in there, too. And to do that, and, I mean, we could put the dirt in there, but then it's a maintenance problem, it's going to look like a big old mulched pile, so.
You added those trees, you added those trees to help.
I, I was talking with Randy about it, and that was his suggestion, and, and I felt that was the best, the best approach.
I think, I think it looks fantastic, I just wanted to get.
Because the, the other office building, I mean, I don't know who, we're, sometimes, you get it, who's buffering from whom at times, but they don't have much in the way of lands, nothing but grass on their side, so this will really dress it up, I think.
I think it looks great, sir, I just wanted to address the written comment. Thank you. Mr. Chair, that's all for me.
Mr. Chair, I have no questions.
Okay.
Is that two quick questions for Mr. Burkett? There are some weird, they look like stub outs around, too, they're.
They're like reverse, for when you're backing out of the parking, down towards the south.
Let me get to site plan here.
Some assume that they're just eight and turning when you're in reverse, they're not, they're not, they're not proposed stub outs.
No, those are just, if you're in that parking spot, yeah, bump outs, that we call, so you can get in and out of the site.
Um, is this building have a conference area, do you know, I know that's probably a better question for the applicant.
No, not that, not that I was told.
It's not, okay, so then parking wouldn't be a concern, because you hit the number. There was a condition that says all sidewalks, it says all, sidewalk on Esquire, it's very ambiguous, if I could read it two different ways, do we need to maybe define that language a little tighter, that says all sidewalks on Esquire?
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to feel compelled to.
Just define that, because.
I technically could ask you to replace it with sidewalks, like on Esquire, so.
Right, no, no, I get what you're saying, yeah, because it, it reads as we're required to fix the entire sidewalk system.
Yeah, it just says Esquire Drive.
So, yeah, all sidewalk that fronts this property.
Yeah, so I would just suggest that we, we make it just a slight adjustment to type of language, but.
That's what my intention was, so.
I'm sure it was, you look like you're pretty busy this last month, so we'll forget. Um, no, great, another great site plan, looking forward to having you guys here, and we need the hotel space over here, so, it's awesome. Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Mr. Burkett.
I have no questions, mine were concerned with the shrubs and the tree line, and Mr. Burkett answered those, so thank you.
Have I gotten everybody? Except me? We, we mic'erb? You'd think I'd learn after a while. We meet the, the pervious surface requirements?
Yes.
Because I know this is, this is almost two quarts, a building on a one-quart lot.
Right, yeah, I mean, the, the minimum requirement was 25%, at least 25% has to be pervious, and they got it at 39%.
Good, and this probably would be better answered by Mr. Kossler, but just as a point, the, the, the pipe that goes from your settling pond, which is basically what it is, does that go into the lake at Mallard Landing or that pond at Mallard Landing? I know it's sized for a, a whole lot more than Mallard Landing, so.
Yeah, the, well, exactly, it's, there's a couple different detention ponds in, in the area, there's a couple upstream that were sized for some of this development also, it was done Colin Sattler, and that was what Arnold Spicer, I think, was involved in the beginning of that, and I think I designed two of the pond, detention ponds up, but I, I forget now, but we consulted with the city engineer's office, and they, they were the ones that come back, said that this is, this lot has been taken into, the stormwater runoff has been accommodated by the Mallard Landing ponds and, and the other ponds, so, but our water quality pond, I, we've got like a, I forget, didn't bring it with me, but I think it's only like an inch orifice, so all our water goes into that pond, and it goes out a little one-inch hole, so you're never, really going to, until you get a hundred year frequency storm event or something in that order, you're not going to get a lot of water out of it, so it, it really is quite over-controlled, so.
Okay, well, that was just for my own edification. Randy, was that, was that originally the, was that the Candlewood Suites that was never built, was that?
I believe it was Cambria.
Cambria, something like that?
Cambria Suites, something like that, that was a long time ago, but, yeah, they had.
Because I, I thought that was, that had been zoned for.
It was, it was, it was a PUD with a B3 underlying, so there was height restrictions of 35 feet, and this has a flat roof, and, so we need to get a little higher.
I seem to recall that it was originally zoned for another motel.
Right, yeah, Cambria Suites, actually, it was, site plan got approved, it's just, I think it was right around the time that the market, or all money just disappeared because of the financial crisis, so.
Okay, great, thank you. Anything else, folks? Okay, I need a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve PUD 18-2, SSP Number One, with an amendment to condition, I just had it here, condition, somebody help me.
Twenty.
Condition twenty, to edit the language to, all sidewalks on owner's frontage on Esquire Drive shall be repaired, so just amend it, so it's more specific.
Shouldn't want them to fix all the sidewalks?
Five percent left.
I'm sure they don't.
I don't think that'd be very fair to the owner.
No, that's, that's off-site improvement.
Mr. Chair, I second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any last comments? Time for the roll.
Mr. Height?
Yes.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes.
Mr. Schreider?
Yes.
Ms. Akers?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Self?
Yes. Motion carries five zero, and I just stayed at a Holiday Inn Express about two weeks ago and was very impressed with it, so I'm looking forward to seeing yours go in, welcome to Beaver Creek.
Thank you. I thought you were about to do the commercial.
No, 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 no commercial.
I stayed at a Holiday Inn Express last night. We're table.
And now I'm on planning commission. We have one left, folks, PC, PC 19-3, Thoroughfare Plan Update.
This is case number PC 19-3, for the purpose of reviewing an update to the city of Beaver
Yes, thank you, again, this is a proposed update to our 2000, it was, 2012 was the last time we got the thoroughfare plan approved, and so periodically, we like to go back and revisit these and, and see what's changed, and, and what any conditions, conditions that have changed, how do we need to amend this plan? Again, the intent of a thoroughfare plan is we look comprehensively at the city in terms of where development's going to go, where we anticipate it's going to go, and where current plans already show improvements to our thoroughfare plans, and then where are the gaps, where is, where we think development's going to go, but no road improvement's going to go, and then we project those out and figure out where we want to add, add roads to the MVRPC's long-range plan, which is the vessel by which we would get federal funding for road widening projects and the like. In terms of the process, you know, we, we started in, last summer, and worked with the Non-Motorized Transportation Advisory Committee and the Engineering Department, and came up with a draft that you have, that I sent to you guys last week, which is before you, and this is a collaborative, collaborative effort of those groups, and so we're looking this evening to get a resolution of support, so that over the next month or two, we can go to city council and get this reviewed. I do plan to have one open house here in probably May, not any kind of presentation, just set maps around and invite people in for a couple hours if they have any questions or anything like that, so that'll be another public meeting for public to come in and speak, though this is a public meeting, too, but I just, that's the process, and then ultimately in the summer, we'd like to get this approved and, and moved on. In terms of what we found, functional classification of this Beaver Creek, you know, that really hasn't changed much, you know, we added a few roads, Lillian Lane, it's being extended now, so we added that on as a commercial, I'm sorry, residential collector, all the way up from where it's being stubbed in now through to New Germany Trayline, there was some additional, Park Overlook Drive was constructed since 2012, and that's, you know, we, we added that in as a minor arterial, and, and also the west side of Lakeview Drive, ultimately as a commercial collector as well. In terms of non-motorized transportation facilities, you know, we've got a good system right now set up, you know, it's changed quite a bit since the 2012, and I'll go into that in a minute, but you know, we have 22 miles of side paths, and we define side paths as a sidewalk that's at least eight feet wide or wider, almost nine miles on-street facilities, and we define those, that could be widened, widened, widened shoulders, I couldn't think of the word, Commons Boulevard has sharrows, which is, is, it's signed, so that, no, this is kind of, the, the right side of the lane is a bike, is where bikes are to be found, and you know, we've got the widened shoulders on Research Drive, and then Grange Hall, we've got actual bike lanes themselves. We've got signed neighborhood connectors, you know, almost 14 miles of that, and that's in working with the Bike Way Committee, what's the best route to get from certain, certain points throughout the neighborhoods, and what they feel is the most efficient and safe routes, and so we've came up with this whole system. And then there's sidewalks throughout the neighborhoods and, and along, and some of the North Fairfield and Dayton-Zenia Roads. So, so how's we, how have we changed since 2012? Well, we've, we've gotten one and a half miles of on-street facilities constructed, and those, that, almost five miles of side paths and sidewalks, and 5.4 miles of signed neighborhood connectors, and just to get an, give you an idea again, and it's kind of hard to see, you know, it really, light purple there is where existing ones are, it, they were existing in 2012, and this dark purple represents the additions since the 2012 plan. Side paths and sidewalks, you could see the, the dark red represents the sidewalk, side paths that we've had constructed since the 2012 plan, and the darker yellow is additional sidewalks, and that comes a lot in the neighborhoods, but then there's some along Dayton-Zenia Road, and some along Park Overlook. Signed neighborhood connectors, it's mainly on the south side, but this purple line represents the signed neighborhood connectors that we've constructed since 2012. So how do we, where do we think we're going? You know, I looked at, over the last 10 years, on an annual basis, what's the square footage we've, of each different type of use, in terms of annual square footage, and also in terms of the density, but how many square feet per acre is our development been? And based on all these numbers, you know, we anticipate between now and 2040, between 800 and 1,000 new residential units between, within the city, and the yellow represents areas where we anticipate those are going to go, between 1.6 and 1.8 million square feet of commercial in the next 21 years, 1.3 million to 1.6 million square feet of office in the next 20 years, and the biggest range is because we've had a slowdown in most recent years of research and development, so it's between, the range was really wide, between a quarter of a million and a million square feet of office and research over the next 20, 20, 21 years. So we, these are, this is, let me get back to that, this is the areas where we anticipate that, that different type of development going. So what we do is we looked at our five-year capital improvement plan, the MVRPC tip, which is their short-range plan, which is money, or projects that they've already decided to fund, and then we also look at the MVRPC's long-range plan, which they haven't funded yet, but in order to get into that previous plan, I talked about the tip, you have to be in the long-range plan. So we kind of overlaid all them together, and said, well, where are the gaps that we think we need to get into that long-range plan? And where we came up with was on the west side of Kemp, west of Grange Hall, you know, there's a lot of residential here, and there's a lot of potential for residential in this vacant area, same thing with, on the east side of Kemp is to hopefully correct that double-S curve over there, and there's a lot of good, or a lot of potential for residential on that north and south side of Kemp. Also, if anybody has kids that get dropped off at school knows that the east- Also, if anybody has kids that get dropped off at school knows that, uh, the east side of Dayton-Zenia Road could use some help, um, so if we could get something in the long-range plan about maybe getting an extra lane on, um, that portion of Dayton-Zenia, that's something that we recommend. And, and then Indian Ripple and South Fairfield and Grange Hall are the main areas, because we've got a lot of vacant research park land and there's a lot of vacant residential, future residential land. So people who, the 500-plus homes that could possibly go here, and then there's outside of the city, there's some in the township that's growing, uh, being developed across from the Russ Research Center now, and there's talk of a possible school in this area in the future, all that, you know, I think that Indian Ripple's gonna need some help. And so we'd like to add Indian Ripple and then Grange Hall ultimately from people trying to get down to 35 or up to 35 or out to 675. So the areas in green are projects that we propose adding to the long-range plan. And you can see that, how that kind of trends the, the Grange Hall, the Kemp and the Indian Ripple's, how we anticipate, why we anticipate those areas. Also in the plan, we do show some future connectors. Uh, as Planning Commission is well aware, we took Cedar Brook through, through a few times and got that through connection onto Newton Drive. Um, that's a main help of that, the main reason I was able to, you know, really advocate for that really strongly was because it was in our current thoroughfare plan. And so there's other areas, you know, with this, um, potential for these homes to be here, is there a connection, a back connection from Terra onto Indian Ripple Road? Um, you know, there are connections into future development up here on Kemp and across Kemp. So these are areas that not necessarily are we looking to get federal funding for, but it helps us, anything south of the, especially anything south of the Impact Feed District, you know, when a developer wants to build something, you know, it really gives us teeth when we say you need to build that road, is to keep it in the thoroughfare plan. Um, in terms of proposed on-street, uh, non-motorized facilities, you know, we have a, quite a few miles of on-street proposed and sidewalks and side paths. So there is a, a good amount that will go in on the future roadway projects. And in terms of the numbers, you know, this represents 70 additional miles of on-street facilities, seven and a half miles of on-street, uh, side paths and sidewalks, and 17 more miles of, of neighborhood connectors, 10 and a half miles of roads to put on the MVRPC long-range plan and almost eight miles of future connectors. But I wanted to point out, this is largely unfunded, so we need to get on, I mean, all those 10 miles and the seven and eight miles, I mean, all that, I mean, we don't have it in the city budget right now, so we need to get the MVRPC grant money, so we need to get those roads on that long-range plan. And the, and the motorized, non-motorized facilities, those are intended not to be built as standalone projects, but in, in collaboration with road widening projects so that we can use that MVRPC, CMAC and TIP money. But that's, that's a brief overview of the plan. Um, we recommend that you make a recommendation of approval to city council and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have some.
Thank you. Very comprehensive. Uh, this is a public hearing, folks, so...
Oh, yes.
Is there someone here who wishes to speak? I knew you had to be here for that.
The last person. Um, my name's Henry Wallbeck. I'm at 3424 Dayton-Zenia Road in Beaver Creek. And, uh, I just was wondering, is there an update that you could provide on the, uh, on the center? Uh, is there, is there an update that you could provide on the development that's going along Rock Drive and, uh, the former Lehman residence? If Randy or Jeff could elaborate on any of that? I think it's forthcoming.
Right. I haven't got any plans for it yet.
Okay.
You know, we just got to, we're gonna start grading and building Santeri Sewer.
I'm sorry?
Well, that's, but I haven't got any construction drawing in terms of building. I mean, you've got site stuff, right?
You have site?
Yeah.
Y'all, y'all need to get up to the line, folks.
Okay. We'll take turns.
Go ahead. I do know Mitch Kostler, we went to school together. I'm an architect with Richley in Dayton. This is my 48th year.
Yeah, so far they've submitted plans that include the, um, the beginnings of the, uh, the stormwater and detention facility for the overall site and plus the sanitary sewer. I, I know they're still working on their layout for, for the, the roads and the access and some of the, the site details, but they're looking to, and start installing utilities and getting going with it.
Okay. I do know this is a public hearing and you probably don't want to release the... You probably don't want to release the, uh, uh, I know that it's for one client, the, the Rock Drive parcel. I am aware of who it is and as you probably are as well, or maybe not, I don't know.
We'll see.
We'll see.
Comes to us.
Okay. Um, have there been any, uh, submittals on street? The future street? Because that was in the Dayton Business Journal about, um, maybe a month and a half ago. City manager made a comment with Jared Barnett, uh, saying that they plan on doing the Lance Road extension. It's been in the works for many, many years and then, uh, so it's not new.
Now, that is, that is part of this, is it not? I seem to recall when we approved that, that, uh, that the piece of it that runs from Dayton-Zenia Road has already been built and this will eventually connect?
Right. There are thoroughfare plans, you know, and that piece was built when the funeral home was built, the piece that goes across from Wallaby and extends to the north. And they've had some preliminary layouts for the street network, but it's not finalized just yet. We're still, there's still some back and forth as far as how those roads are gonna align and whatnot.
That's been, but that's been in our thoroughfare, thoroughfare plan for a long time.
Right. I, I can't really speak to...
And also the land use plan.
Sure. I can't really speak to the phasing of their development where, you know, I, I wouldn't expect, uh, that connection to be made, you know, right off the bat. It'll take some time to get that done.
Okay. Thank you. And then for the last, I don't, I don't want to take much more time, but for last year's Planning Commission meeting, April 4th, um, Mr. Self had asked if the property, meaning the Lehman property, would complete the Lance Road loop, and Mr. Burkett said yes. So that is, that is finalized. I mean, what you're saying, what's been said last year?
I don't know.
These are from your meeting minutes?
Uh, I'm gonna try to remember, but if my memory serves me, and help me out here, folks, uh, if my memory serves me, uh, once that property is built out, that the Lance Road, the connection will be made, because...
Correct.
The folks, help me out here, uh, Randy, but if my memory serves me, the property that is, uh, part of this development goes all the way to this existing stubbed-out road that, uh, Lance Road that leads off of Dayton-Zenia. There's no intervening property.
Okay.
It's got all the way around.
Correct. But that doesn't mean that that would necessarily be built at, as the first phase of any development on that parcel.
No, I understand. Uh, our property is behind that.
Correct.
Maybe if you would like...
Oh, yes, I remember.
Yeah. Um, yeah, I don't know if you could, if you could put this on your, on your slideshow. Do the green one here. Just like that. It may not work. That's okay.
It's thinking about it.
There it is.
Hey!
Okay.
Except it's upside down.
I'm glad I don't have Vertigo. Uh, the tan stuff, the tan color is what Synergy owns and the blue color is what Synergy owns. The pink are private parcels, uh, as is the white. White is the inspired daycare. Uh, the green is our property. So you can see the road comes in and then directly, uh, it's very efficient and takes it out to the funeral home. So that would be my question, um, if that is the intent. And if I'm reading the minutes right, the property's been acquired, um, and so that should be it, give or take, uh, within, within its, within its, uh, constraints, yeah. Yeah, so that doesn't affect us. Uh, we do have a lot of trees on our property and, uh, the elevation does drop substantially, uh, about in the middle of the back of our property. So what we're looking for is the same thing everybody else asks for is buffering.
Sure.
Um, and I, and since Synergy's doing it, I'm sure that they'll do something, so...
Well, like I say, we haven't gotten a specific site plan on that yet, so that would be, that would be the time, uh, that we, we as a planning commission would look at that.
Right. And then, thank you. And then up at, and I'll keep my minutes short. Uh, up at the front of our property, right where the A is, there's a rectangular lot there, that's been for sale, and I think, Jeff, you may know that. Uh, you actually did some, had some of your crew do some of the work after the Dayton-Zenia Road paving. Uh, there was a knoll there that was overgrown with grass and, uh, we went ahead and cut it for that owner. Um, property's been up for sale for a long time. Um, they do not have access via our private lane, and that's, that's our intent. We own the lane back there. It's about 1,200 feet long. Um, and so from time to time, people do come back, they're looking around, um, but it's, our, our part of that lane is not for sale and it's private. So, and I know there's a lot of development around here, you know, there, what, what I saw tonight, you know, with car washes that are not, don't seem to work very well, people are gonna be looking for other parcels, so... So we would expect if that were to be developed and they need their own access, and they would have to also provide separation from our residential property to whatever commercial intent that they have along that, along that piece. So, anyway, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Was there any written input? Since we're fresh out of people out there. Okay, I will officially close the public hearing and I'll just throw this open. Folks, questions, comments?
No, sir.
Everybody good on this? Your usual good job. And thanks for the Cliff Notes summary, too, it, since this...
I didn't think you'd want to go through a, a page document.
Yeah, it's about 70 pages, so...
He picked a night when he knew we were gonna be worn out.
Right! His mama didn't raise him.
I'm a planner.
Okay, if there are no comments, then I need a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve PC 19-3, thoroughfare plan 2019 update.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. And it, it is in fact a motion to approve or a motion...
Recommendation.
To recommend.
Motion to recommend.
A motion to recommend approval.
I second that motion.
Okay. I have a motion and a second, and Melissa will get it absolutely correct in the minutes.